That's a go.
Yeah, prayers.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. It is 9:00 a.m. I recall the meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any point. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business this morning is to open with prayer, and Commissioner Wulver, I believe you are up for that.
Thank you. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today grateful for our many blessings. We thank you for the wonderful servants in our community, our first responders, law enforcement, public servants, educators across our county as the schools are starting up. We ask that you be with them and also lend your armor to our military personnel serving here at home and abroad. We ask that you keep us in the order of rain to help our ag producers finish the year with some additional moisture. In your name we pray. Amen.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held August 22, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, it appears that all is in order. I would make a motion to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on August 22, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wulver. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next order of business is the claims and treasures receipts.
Chairman, I would move to accept the claims and treasures receipts presented.
Motion by Weems?
Second.
Second by Woodruff.
Becky, what's the $10,000 on the cable franchise? Is that within the city?
No, it's for people outside the city limits. This, we used to get this amount basically annually, but we've been getting that every quarter. So when we finally got that cable franchise agreement done after it took a long time, but that increased. So yes, that's totally.
Oh, good. That's work that Tyler did for us.
What?
The cable franchise.
Oh, sounds good.
Quadruple. Sir. Any further discussion?
So on the cable franchise, can you explain that to me? That's for people who live outside.
They have to be outside the city limits.
But within a certain area.
Well, apparently they're, I remember we negotiated this, or Joe Wright was negotiating to rewrite this three years ago. And essentially, as you know, we can't be inside the municipality, but these would be ones that they can reach with their cable service that are in the, in the county versus the city limits.
Okay.
So it'd be the, some of the suburban.
Yeah, that's a nice, that's a nice revenue.
Like, well, Becky reminded me of the numbers. That's four times what we got historically.
And you said Tyler did the work on that, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome. I'm glad to do it your way.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
It's like a fairly short stack of claims. It was probably a month's length already.
Yeah. Last week of the month.
Two weeks probably.
Yeah.
Still can be a large amount of dollars.
Well, in this case, it is.
I see the claim from Menoris, something about our soul, stories facility, soul.
It's gonna take a lot to fill that up, huh?
Lot of bags.
One bag at a time.
That would be small percentage I have ever seen.
It happens occasionally, but not around. Probably have 300 email in there from last week, but you won't be able to see that.
A little part of rain up there, Mary?
I got that 45 or 48 hundreds 10 weeks ago, whatever it been. Last Wednesday. That's gonna rain a mile square.
Three layers too, maybe.
That's bars from Curves. He says he's made how green it is north of, compared to down there.
Right here it gets worse.
Becky, did you get your daughter sent off?
We did. We put her on planes. I didn't worry. She made it to her retirement at, you know, week thirty our time.
Wow. She probably saw a whole bunch of Nebraskans there.
I don't know.
It might have been a fairly warm welcome.
Yeah. Court is where my family is from.
Oh, really?
Yep. It's on my bucket list.
From Denver to Atlanta. She had a, for her scholarship, she had a flight to Nostic Carrier. So she got moved from Denver to Atlanta, then Amsterdam into Cork, and then she had to get the bus, not a train.
Oh.
She did get, she did get.
Would she have anybody traveling with her or just her all by herself? I'm good for her.
She did. She skipped the bus. She said, like, I was having trouble finding the bus. And she said, I go to line, line taxis. She said, I just took a taxi.
Smart girl.
Yes. I will say though, she got everything in two turns. She was only taking one, one checked bag. She took one big seat. Is she gonna have two? She's like, no, I'm taking all in one.
Wow.
I'm sure all the shipping stuff, yeah.
Probably a lot cheaper than paying airline fees for extra cases.
I thought the sheriff's office went to that person at the AT&T.
I do not know the answer to that.
Becky, are you familiar with the different mini light and water accounts?
Not really.
We've got one for $5,300. Wondering if that was courthouse consumption or the jail.
It should have an address on it or something.
Listen, says 301 North Shepherd Street.
That's us.
There's the courthouse, yep. That's a lot of consumption. Five grand.
Bear Runham, I thought that would be. I don't know.
I can send him a quick text message if you want me to tell him.
Yeah, ask him if that's normal. That's a lot of consumption for an office. Other than, well, I can, I can see this e-bus system.
The well, yeah.
That's, and the well.
I noticed that they're pumping stuff down the.
Why don't we capture that water that's going in together? I know. Get that out for the producers. Exactly. Pump it back upstream.
Or, fuck, we could reinject it back with the front off. No way.
That's an awful idea.
That's light and water camp?
Yes. The aggregate is like 7,300 for this month, but 5,300 for one meter or one address. Tyler's fault. It just jumped at me.
You don't have an LED bulb in that thing?
5,300.
It's two.
It's 5,347, I think. It just jumped out at me because, you know, we're cars track, grain facility, slow type of consume 5,300. And 15,000 in October, I don't know. But it just kind of surprised me. It's that high for this facility.
We need our center pivots back down in the southwest corner to start seeding some of those clouds. I see that rain made it over to us knowing that there was just so dry over about Sutherland Paxton, it just dried up and stopped going. Something about this dry weather. I got a, a couple of my pastures, a bumper crop of, this one weeds this year. They did well.
Isn't it amazing how they can grow with even better when it's dry?
I never even had any, a couple of pastures, no, I went out like that.
Hard to kill weeds too, like this.
I started spraying. I got so disappointed. My machine over here, I just quit. It doesn't do any good now anyway, but.
Yeah.
And that, it's crazy.
It's almost a full-time job, and we don't even have that many acres.
I didn't see you over there, Julie. Good morning. Oh, they look stone-faced.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. They look serious.
We're in the pound now.
No smiles?
Good morning, ladies.
You have to come in with a smile. You're gonna have to do the Walmart cheer.
Not even Walmart does that anymore.
They don't?
No.
It is 9:15. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We will again be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted at the entrance to the room for public review. First order of business this morning is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held August 22, 2022.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting that was held August 22, 2022.
Motion by Weems?
Second.
Second by Wulver. Any corrections for that portion? Further comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. And I believe this morning we have one on personal property and three on real estate.
Under a different name now, under American Towers, so it would have been depreciated out under them. So this is correcting and taking it off for the 2021 tax list. The value on that tower.
Because it's on another, under a different name?
Yeah. Yep. Sure was. And then the three real estate ones would be the taxless corrections that, for 2018, 19, and 20, on the Turk cases for that section 42 housing, Western Tabor, I believe what it was.
Western Tabor Ranch Apartments?
That was Turk ordered for those years. Those are the taxless corrections for those three on the real estate ones.
Okay. Personal property first?
Yeah.
Chairman, I would move to approve the certificate of correction and refund regarding personal property as submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
All the rest of those are on the Turk about, adjustment you say, Julie?
Yes.
Real estate on real estate?
Yep.
So.
And those were for the.
Taxure 2018, taxure 2019, 2020. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor on the real estate for those three years for taper.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. For everybody's reference, that totals just shy of 10,000 total for all of these years. Any further discussion on this?
Tyler, did you look at those by chance?
Did I?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Oh, something Stephen's.
Stephen, do you have something to add to this? Or we go?
That's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
So there were two separate discussions about the Western Tabor Ranch, the previous years and then the last year.
So we were ordered to do the corrections, which is what this is.
Yep.
And then we're gonna discuss.
And then I think you still have, you know, the 30 days to appeal the decision for these three.
Which is next time. So we'll get to that here in a second.
Okay.
But I think we've always felt, you know, we're ordered to do the corrections, so we do the correction.
Okay.
And then we address it from there.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next order of business is the Turk decision on property owned by Western Tabor Ranch Apartments LLC. Steve, if you want to come up now, I'm sure we'll have some questions. State your name and sign in for the record.
Steve, King from the county attorney's office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Steve. Maybe you were here just to check up on this guy, but maybe.
So just for reference, this was before us last week, and we asked for a little bit of due diligence to go into the decision. What were you able to find out for us, Steve?
So basically, what's important here of the cases they cited, what's important is that they said a professional appraisal is competent evidence. Basically, the professional appraisal that he submitted to Turk was useful. And then I went, I, between that research and I talked with the deputy county attorney in Buffalo County, who's been doing civil stuff for quite a long time, maybe longer than Joe Wright now, I don't know. But he basically said, in order to get an appeal, it's a very high burden. We would have to show that Turk was arbitrary and capricious in making their ruling, which basically means that there is no reasonable ground that they could have chosen that decision. There wasn't any proper consideration of the circumstances. Basically, what they're saying is pretty much no one, your common layman could say that the appraisal was good evidence in making their decision. And honestly, I don't think we have it because if you ask just a random person off the street. And honestly, I don't think we have it, because if you ask just a random person off the street who knows nothing about the statutes, who knows nothing about any of this, they're going to say, why isn't an appraisal a good indication of how much it's worth?
Well, I would agree with that, but state statute lays out the very distinct language that we're supposed to use the income approach.
I, I don't dispute that. All I'm saying is to get an appeal, it's going to be harder than just proving that. It's going to say that Turk had no, there was no way they could have, anyone could have come to that decision. I mean, if you want me to appeal it, I can, but I'm just saying.
So if you appeal, some county, then the burden of proof falls back on us instead of them, you know, the taxpayer previously, burden of proof is on them.
We got you.
I thought that our direction was to go back and tell us of the three cases. What specifically in each of those cases, in the dicta and otherwise? In other words, you said, well, in general, it's this, but, but what did you glean from reading the specific cases and the outcome? Were they all exactly the same? And were they all exactly the same and they had an appraisal?
They, they were just specific to each case, but most.
But that's, that was what we asked, wasn't it? I thought that was our question.
Like I said, the cases they cited, most of them were talking, well, they had some about standard of review.
Steve?
And.
Stephen, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The other thing, before it leaves my mind, is to Joe's point. My other thing that I thought we were, our objective, objective was, is to determine from Turk, how they can justify or reconcile the fact that we followed the statute, but yet they ruled against evaluation. That's, I mean, that's fundamental to the question I have, is you're asking our assessor to follow the statute, and then you're saying, oh, forget that statute, I overrule. How and why?
I don't think that was even mentioned in the Turk's decision, was it, that the income approach needed to be followed? It didn't address the income approach at all.
But isn't that the guideline you follow?
That's the guideline we are required to follow.
And they're aware of that, obviously.
I would assume they would, they should be. Their attorney, they don't have one assessor.
Well, I shouldn't assume anything.
What do you mean, we, we assume we should be? We, we presented our case to them, so you were there.
Yes, we told them.
We, we presented that, so they are aware of it, right?
Correct.
Because that was a big part of our case, we presented surely, right?
Yep.
Yes.
As state statute says, we have to do this. Okay.
That was the answer for the question I wanted to answer, was how does Turk then rationalize this?
They didn't, they just ignored it.
They just ignored it.
They didn't mention it at all in the ruling. They, most, the cases pretty much just said, there were stuff that talked about their standard of review.
Under the guidelines of how Turk operates, are they compelled or historically will they provide insight as to the ruling beyond the written decision?
I doubt it.
So they can understand that?
I doubt it. You, I mean, it's, they're acting like a court, they're an administrative court.
Right.
So their guideline, their insight into their decisions is their order. That's pretty much it.
How often has this happened to your office, with Turk doing this? This is the first time you ran into this?
This is the first time we've lost a Section 42 one. Yeah, for the Section 42. We've lost other cases, but I don't, they've just probably been just the regular, regular appraisal. It wasn't something that we had to follow differently, like this Section 42 ones.
So on that appeal process, assuming we did, are you, is it within the parameters of how that's structured that you can enumerate, point out this is a key issue, is why we challenged their overturning our evaluation?
I mean.
Because, and cite the statute?
My.
And then tell us no again?
If I did, if we did an appeal, basically the crux of what I would be saying is we are required to follow the statute and.
And that's what I think I want you to, would want you to do, is throw it back to them and justify this. We followed the statute, yet you overturned it. With no real definitive explanation of why.
That, that would be my thought too. I want them to detail exactly why we are wrong for following the law. Is that where you're at, Joe?
I agree, and interdicted, the administrative court, i.e. Turk, should have mentioned that. Well, we understand that the standing law is this except for, but they didn't mention it. So that's the reason I wonder if they're even aware with this particular type, not all general appraisals, but this particular type. There's very specific language in the law that handles it differently.
Because it sets a dangerous precedent.
They, they are aware of it. We have two other cases from two other counties where they went the other way. I think that this particular individual, he owns many properties in many counties around the state, and he pretty much appeals every one of them every year, and he loses on, I think, most of them, right?
I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fault the, the taxpayer, the property owner for challenging their assessment, but.
What I'm saying is I think Turk was giving him a win. They saw this was probably the weakest case. I'm not saying it was a bad case for us, but they viewed it as probably the weakest case and decided to give him a token win.
But I don't understand how it could be a weak case. We're literally following to the letter of the law on how we're valuing that property.
In testimony, he claimed that it wasn't Section 42. Whereas we have called NIFA, and NIFA had confirmed with us that it was Section 42. He was not submitting his income like he's supposed to for Section 42 to the state, none of that. However, this last year, he did submit income. So I don't know if that's an admittance that it is Section 42, and if that's why they went the way they went, but.
Did we have evidence? Do you remember that proof, other than?
I got a list off of the NIFA website saying it was.
Oh, I, it would be my opinion that we appeal.
I agree. Even if it is a tall hill decline, it's a principle thing. We have, sort of a subdivision in the county is following the law. And they're following the law and they're, and they're throwing somebody a bone.
And, and I think the other thing that's important is, you know, Charity just mentioned perhaps it was some misinformation to the court. And so that brings up another reason that it really is appealable, because here's additional evidence that you may not have had or had incorrectly. And that's certainly, any court will listen to that.
Well, the appeals court can't listen to new evidence. They go based on the record that is in front of them.
As I understand, and I, maybe I'm wrong, because I wasn't there, Stephen, you, you were. I'm understanding that during the original hearing with Turk, there was testimony given by the owner. That testimony was incorrect. We have proof that it's incorrect. An appeals court or anything else, I think, could hear on something like that, could they not, if we find out factually afterwards?
Their standard of review is going to be, was there any reason, based on the record they have, that?
Yes, there is a reason, because they have the wrong information.
I agree with that, totally.
Well, the other situation that we have is the appraisal wasn't actually submitted to us until the 2020 protest. So even if we would have had it for 18 and 19, or we didn't have it for 18 and 19, so we didn't know anything about it. So we couldn't have changed the value then, anyway.
I'm sure that wasn't mentioned during the protest.
I'm sure it was, very testimonial.
Sounds to me with the assistance of people in the assessor's office that understand the process for years, having dealt with this, I think we should put together an appeal, my personal opinion.
And even if we don't win, it's stating a position that.
That's right.
That our assessor's office acted accordingly to what they should per statute, and were on record as opposing Turk's review.
Including 21 and 22s, that will be appealed.
To Stephen's comment about giving him, giving him a win, that's arbitrary and capricious.
Exactly.
Well. Officially, no, that wasn't, that's just my opinion of what they did.
I understand that, but, yeah.
So.
I don't think, they're not following, I don't think they're following the, uh, what do you call it, the 42?
Section 42.
Section 42 guideline.
Especially where you said that they've had other cases very similar to this and ruled in favor of those. So it just doesn't make sense.
So hypothetically, there's an appeal. Say we lose, what's steps after that, just for my insight?
I mean, we could appeal it again to the Supreme Court, but, again, it's the same standard of review.
Well, to Joe's point, it, it is relevant, in my opinion. I'm not an attorney, but if they stated it a certain way and it turns out that that's not the way it was, then that's something that can be challenged in an appeal. I don't see why not. I guess all they can do is put it in a shredder, but at least, but if they're gonna start doing this, wholesale to these county assessors all over the state, why are we bothering to follow the statute? I think it's terrible not to protest it.
Tyler, I see your gears are turning.
They are.
Okay.
Everything I know about Turk will fit in that I'll be go.
No, we don't have a problem helping Stephen get what the information that he needs to prepare and stuff.
Well, Charity has brought up some good points and last week as well, and, and the ladies, and I, I know you can give, provide some perspective and insight to help craft that. And that's what I'm, I guess I meant requesting you help Stephen on with that. Does that make sense? Stephen, does that make sense to you?
Yep.
Is that your opinion?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Woodruff?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Mr. Wuler?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement. We'd like to proceed with an appeal, so.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have the, a deadline coming up on that, so.
Yes.
What is the deadline?
It's April 29th, I think.
Okay.
Pretty quick, so we'll try to get something.
Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is discuss and consider adoption of a resolution by Lincoln County, determining the final allocation of levy for political subdivisions under the county levy limit. I believe everybody had, got a copy of this in their packet. Becky, did you have anything to speak to?
This is just the preliminary request that the Cemetery Fire Act Society and the Sutherland Hospital District are required to give us. Basically, it's just to make sure that they are within the range that, because we have to share our 50 cent levy with them, so, but we are fine on that. So this is the amount that they can have without causing any problems.
Okay. Do you have a resolution number?
16.
Does the original resolution copy have Commissioner Wuler's name on that?
It might not have, Terry, Terry, the doctor.
No, it hasn't, do it, Henry.
It would be a cross through there.
Okay.
Sorry about that?
No.
It happens.
So Becky, you're in line with your expectation?
Yes.
We actually submit the budget, every tax district has to show that we are under our levy limit. So that's why we have, we use the maximum amount for all those, because then you'd have hundreds and hundreds of different, you know, districts and levy limits. So this kind of makes it a general, more general levy.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
I am.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022 Day 16, which is a resolution by Lincoln County determining the final allocation of levy for political subdivisions under the county levy limit.
Second. Motion by Hugley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which is discuss and consider taking action to approve exceeding the budget, the budget limit by an additional 1% for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year for the Lincoln County budget. You know, last year, we did not take the additional 1%, but I think, given the extraordinary inflationary environment, not knowing how long that's going to continue, it might be prudent to protect the flank, so to speak, when it comes to the budget.
I don't see that we have much choice to, not necessarily have to raise it, but we, we need to protect that, as you say, because inflation's really put a serious dent in consumption of dollars for fuel and other things.
And just to clarify, this doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to raise our budget to that extent. It just gives us the authority to, if need be.
Right, correct. Yeah, I prefer not, but we better protect, it's a good way to put it, protect the flank on that.
Um, this was a large area of conversation when I went to the budget meeting in Ogallala earlier this year. And it's something that I really struggled to understand. I've asked a lot of questions. And I did find, um, they talked about it in great detail at the budget meeting, and I think you guys probably all have the booklets that were sent out. And on page 17 in there, or, yeah, page 17, they gave a chart of what a 20-year snapshot would look like if we did not take the allowable increase to the authority. And it, it's not something that has an impact on us this year or next year necessarily, but 20 years down the road, it can have a very sizable impact on the financial well-being of the county. And I did find out on the state website from the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts, there was a really good basic explanation in there that I felt helped me understand it. And if you'll let me read that, it says, what does it mean when the governing board approves the additional 1% increase in restricted funds authority each year? And their explanation said, the biggest misconception is that the approval of the additional 1% increase in restricted funds authority means the board is approving increasing the political subdivision's actual property tax increase by 1%. This increase to the political subdivision's authority, not to the actual tax request. By approving the 1%, the governing board is only increasing their authority to generate additional restricted funds, not actually increasing the property tax request. So for me, that was a really good explanation and helped me understand. Also, just talking to people at that meeting and some people that I know around the state. North Central Nebraska used that authority after the floods happened up there to rebuild their communities. Fires, tornado damage, those are the kind of events that could happen to all of us. And I feel like taking this 1% stacks the deck in our favor of being able to take good financial care of our community.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion. Thank you very much.
That was quite a, thank you.
Well, I, I really struggled to understand this, and so I thought it was a good explanation for.
It is, it is an excellent.
For everybody to understand that it's not a request to increase property taxes.
No, that's absolutely right.
But with that being said, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve exceeding the budget limit by an additional 1% for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
Motion by Wuler? Motion by Wuller. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Hughley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Next item under this agenda item is to discuss and consider setting September 29th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed 2022-2023 fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
The joint public hearing will be held on September 27th. So this is the date Susan and I talked about doing. We'll have to have a special meeting on a Thursday that week to actually adopt our budget following that joint public hearing, if we have to participate. I don't, we haven't ran those formulas yet, so I don't know if we do.
And what day did you set that during?
September 27th at 6:00 p.m. It's gonna be at McKinley Education Center.
Based off of what I looked at, the preliminary budget, and I know we still need to run the formulas and everything, but I'm not thinking that we're gonna need to participate in that, so.
But the 29th is a Thursday, right?
Yes.
So that.
We'll have to have a special meeting that way.
We'll have to recess from Monday or just have a special meeting.
Hold a special meeting.
Right here.
The district will be budget items.
So the timing is correct for the, if there isn't in fact a need for the joint meeting, joint hearing.
And when will you know that by?
I don't know, I haven't talked to Susan. Well, we need to do whatever happens with our budget work session today, and then we'll have a better idea for what happens today.
Okay.
Like I said, we just had a plan that's so far ahead for that joint public hearing. I know one school is already gonna have to be there, so.
So this.
Their plan.
If there is a need, this falls into the right timing for other meeting for the joint. Otherwise, it doesn't matter to move, we can just proceed.
It's the unknown, so you've got to kind of plan that you're gonna do it after that meeting, in case we had to.
Any further comment? Questions? Hearing none, roll call vote?
I haven't made a motion yet. I thought we did, sorry. Sorry, Chairman.
Getting ahead of myself.
I would move to set September 29th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed 2022-2023 fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote now, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
It is 9:45. We will now move on to our 9:45.
If we have to take part in the joint public hearing, and that is a very specific formula, I mean, that has to be ran for that, so, I mean, I honestly don't know where we're at. But until we get a little bit farther into the budget today, but if we, if we have the joint public hearing, we do not have to have this, this hearing. If we do not participate in the joint public hearing, then we have to have the one that we've always had, saying we're gonna set the tax request at a different amount than the previous year. So.
Correct.
So that's not on for an action item today, though, is it?
Yes. We're gonna set the date if we need it, then it'll be done.
Where's it at?
It's on the next page.
So if, if we participate, then.
I apologize.
We, we just set the date for that hearing on the 29th. If we don't participate, we're setting one for the same date.
Yes, and it has to be immediately following, so we have to actually have a special hearing, hear the budget hearing close, and then have another special meeting right after that to this, if we need to.
So this portion is discuss and consider setting September 29th, 2022, immediately following the close of the budget hearing for the purpose of receiving comments related to setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year. This is only if needed, depending on the joint public hearing.
We could do one or the other. This is the one we've always done, but.
Tyler, you're scratching your head, are you?
Nothing we discuss right now.
Okay.
Question. Is, how many, how much notice do we have to give on this?
We have to have, I think, posted five days. I mean, we can go back and review this if we need to.
My question was, if we're gonna have a better idea after a budget meeting today, then we could act on this next week, and if, for example, if the budget thing looks like today, we're probably going to need to participate in joint meeting, which I don't think we will, then I don't think there would be any reason to take that action. But if we're not going to, we do need to take that action, right?
Correct. If you're not participating in joint public hearing, we have to do this.
And shouldn't, unless something changes, which, which probably it won't.
Bless you.
Is Susan gonna be here for the last item?
No.
Oh, okay.
But to your point about the timeline, we, we would have time to table this and do it next, next week.
Good.
Go through our numbers.
They just really encouraged us to have our, yes, we'll know for sure, we will know before then whether we're gonna have to participate or not participate in the joint public hearing. But NACO just strongly encourages us to wait till after the joint public hearings to have our budget, our, our political subdivision separate budget sessions.
Oh, even, even if we did participate in the public meeting, they're still suggesting afterwards because of transparency?
Yes.
Right.
Oh, okay.
You.
And that, that makes clear for me.
The NACO's figuring they're gonna have to mail out possibly between 800,000 and 1 million postcards. The assessors have to get their data ran, they gotta get to the state print shop, the state print shop has to print them and mail them out. Their thing was, people that are getting these postcards would maybe not even get them if you had your public hearings.
Prior.
Prior, or early in that, there's like a 10-day window you can have them. Most of them went towards the end because you don't want them getting the postcards after the public hearing is done. So that's why we, that's why they encourage us, this was a date NACO suggested we do statewide for the joint public hearing for those that need it. And then have our, our budget hearings following that date for all the political subdivisions was their suggestion.
Okay. Use as needed.
Yeah, it's only if we need it. If we don't need it, we don't need it.
Yeah.
Chairman? Ready for a motion?
I would move to set September 29th, 2022, immediately after the following, at the close of the budget hearing, for the purpose of receiving comments related, relating to setting the final tax request at a different amount than the prior year. And with the note, only if needed, depending on joint public budget hearing.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wuller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Wuller?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Bruns?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if perhaps our new weekend TV host could repeat that back? I didn't have all of that. Did you get that?
I couldn't, uh, equip it up Sunday.
Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Moving on to our next agenda item, discuss and consider a generator for Lincoln County Courthouse. Brandon has.
Morning.
Good morning, Brandon.
Brandon Myers, Director of Region 51 Emergency Management.
Good to see you, Brandon.
Hopefully you received the packet that I provided.
Yes.
So the generators that are listed in the packet, those were in the top 10 of rated of the best generators for the United States. Took another one of those out of there, and actually, I tried to get quotes for two more, just to kind of give you guys a feeling. Couldn't get a salesman on the line back from, from one of them. The other one I, I got the quote from, very close in price, to a point. It does not include them coming and offloading it with a crane. We would actually have to find that ourselves. And they don't run it, test it, and make sure everything's good on the generator. That wasn't in the quote. I had asked him about that, and when I got the quote, they weren't doing it. So I don't know if it's, they just don't wanna do it, or, or what. That company.
That's one out of Wisconsin?
Yes, their, their main shop's out of Wisconsin. They've got several dealers around the area, one locally, and then given. Farther. But I was also kind of told that on their switch, it's over a year out before they actually have that switch in for the generator we want. Another one that, that we had, that was on the Generac, the high-power generator. Closest dealers, Kansas City, Ola, Des Moines, Denver. Trying to find anybody local that would, would be really good at doing maintenance and working on it if we had problems. Wasn't getting a whole lot of headway on that. And then the last one in there was the Cummins generator, and that one's outruled because it's only natural gas and propane.
And Chairman, Brandon and I went over some of these quotes, and he, he did the legwork to get, pin some of these guys down on price, but the key common denominator of all these others being a real reach for practicality was the fact that service is number one on a generator that you're gonna need now, not next week, or whatever. And we had a conversation about that, travel time and everything else. The NMC price looks consistent to the Altera, for example, which has a one-year wait for the switchgear, and CAT does not. But I use the analogy, comparison, having dealt with a locomotive for almost 25 years, and literally bringing techs out of Texas to service that unit. And the timeliness is not good, and expense is exorbitant. And so, thank you for getting the dollar quotes, Brandon. I, I think I'm certainly comfortable with the NMC, just because cost-wise, we're not out of bounds. And service-wise.
With the, with the quote from NMC, you take out the, the options of them providing the crane and lowering it and running it and all the fuel and everything. Between that and the Generac, it was $1,960 difference.
And the difference between local service.
Local service.
Fast response.
Yes.
And having.
Plus, NMC gives us a five-year warranty. Everything else, all the other generators, we're talking one year.
Out of morbid curiosity, what do you have to spend here?
Let me show, let me just give you the quote. There's CAT.
So is it the top figure and this one in the middle figure combined?
Yeah, if you combine those two, and then the, that's what you get, the $1,960 difference between the two generators. But if you add in the, the optional stuff at the bottom, and the, the smaller print.
The craning and the fuel.
Craning, the fuel, and, and then running and testing it and checking it. And the nice thing with that is, is I know that they will make sure that one to two people or more, however many we wanna provide, will be on hand to kind of learn some of the in-and-outs, so that we have people here that can, can kind of troubleshoot a little bit before having to call a tech.
It's gotta be good. So.
The CAT was through the public.
The sole source.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not the sole source, but the source well.
Yeah. These others were just, make sure we were cost comparative.
Is that what you're determining?
Yes.
And what was the final dollar amount for the purchase outside of some of the things that we need to do for pad and?
Um, if we were, if we were going with the, the CAT, with all the little added extras, it was $132,610. And then add on the, about 700 for the concrete pad. And then that'd be another choice with, with the board, vinyl fencing or cedar pickets to go around it, because those are gonna be two different prices.
I know that the vinyl fencing is a little bit pricier, but the, the maintenance on that is.
A little bit better.
Save money over the long haul.
Brandon, is the switch part of the source well contract too?
What's that?
Is the switch part of the source well contract too?
Um, in the, yeah, for our contract with them, they've got everything in there.
And it's well sourced, right?
Source well is, is the, what they go through.
Colleagues of mine, any other questions for Brandon?
That dollar amount again, 132?
132, 610.
And then if you add in a pad and the vinyl fence, 135, 610.
Yeah. And it'll probably be a little bit more than that, because building grounds said they can handle all that, but they didn't figure in any of the extra little hardware.
Hardware, yeah.
So they just got cost of what the fencing would, would cost, not just the hardware, so.
So building and ground will do the picket and the pad?
Yes.
Or the vinyl and the pad?
Timeline on when it could be delivered to us?
If we go ahead and order it now, we should see it by April. And that's just kind of the, yeah. It's on a lot of stuff.
So hopefully by the next cooling season or so.
Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
I think I answered your questions you had last week.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks for doing the extra labor.
Or the legwork on getting those numbers.
Yeah, you answered my, my questions.
And this would be paid for through our, with our public funds?
I think that one-time expense makes sense to you, lies.
Tyler, that fits?
I would consider the continuity of government, the provision of government services a very foundational thing.
Makes sense with that in mind.
Yeah. And the prices are right neck and neck, so.
Okay.
And if we did have to have a service from it, does NMC have employees on hand?
They do. And they actually, because we use them for our North Tower generator, and they have a service plan that we could actually get on to, where they, twice a year, come out and, and do their, their service, the, the summer and winter service on it. But yeah, they've got, they've got techs on hand. And that was the other kind of nice thing about having NMC is, that's what they work on. It's not, ah, okay, this is a new generator, I gotta figure this, this is the stuff they work on.
Jury to that question, the UP has all these gen sets up and down, they're tracked for signals, and they've got a service tech here, and he would, I'm thinking he'd probably be the same guy that would service this unit, from what Brandon shared.
Nice staff, support locally.
Yeah, he's been doing it for 35-plus years.
And CAT's always been a good partner for the county.
Hearing what I think is agreement, but would like a motion.
Chairman, I would move too. Chairman, I would move to authorize purchase of the gen set from NMC, both power switch and power unit in the amount 132, six, ten, with the note that it is through Sourcewell. So we have sourced the, literally have sourced the cheapest purchase point available.
Okay, motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can we also clarify that we've identified this as something that will fall under an ARP purchase, one-time purchase? Make note of that in the motion.
Woodruff, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comment? Going once, going twice. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Wooler?
I, Brentz.
Aye. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
Appreciate your work on that. I know it's.
We get all of them get that rolling.
About a year-long endeavor, so. Moving on to our next agenda item, discuss and consider Summit Food contract for the Lincoln County Detention Center. I believe we have our county's finest. At least one of them.
Probably that's the Ford.
I thought, I thought I witnessed you guys giving somebody special treatment at the barbecue the other day.
Yeah, we did, and that's how we get paid back.
But it's not done yet, right?
That's gonna cost. That was an hiring great role.
No, all joking aside. Welcome, gentlemen.
You do, you're great cooks, too. You fed us well.
Well, we got our contract back from Summit. Of course, the original one wasn't acceptable, the pricing increases were huge, some as high as eighty percent. Tyler wrote a letter explaining that we would be operating from the contract that we've had since 2009, which is the CPI for Midwest. And got a letter back, actually got the contract hand-delivered from a representative from Connecticut flew in here, brought this contract, which I thought was kind of nice for hand-deliver contract on, contract they claim they're losing money on, but we appreciated it. And, but anyway, it was acceptable, it was the seven point.
Seven and a half percent.
Seven and a half percent. Across the board for the food increase and the administrative fees and some other minor stuff like milk and stuff we don't use anyway, but insignificant. But for the most part, well, for the total part, it was exactly what it should have been now, and we're happy.
And not retroactive?
No, that's right, not retroactive, I forgot that, that's a big deal. That was thirty-some thousand, if I remember right, so. Yeah, it started September one.
Okay. So did he fly coach, or did he fly?
I don't know. He drove from Denver.
If he flew a Gulfstream, we're still getting the lease.
Must have been having a family reunion in the area.
I don't think he's ever been here before.
No, probably never again.
Did you give him a tour of the facility?
He went back to the kitchen, yeah, looked it over, yeah.
Other than that, you guys have always been happy with the service that you've gotten from Summit Foods?
We are, of course, we've had experience with other providers, and they're superior, they are, they're good company. Of course, they've only been Summit Foods since 2019, before there was CVM, and they sold fifty-one percent, so. It became Summit, nothing changed as far as their quality of food. Basically the same thing.
Was as much as he was strong, or Tyler, you're part of it?
Well, we generously offered them their seven and a half percent increase, because even with that, they're still cheaper than when we put it out for bid. And we didn't, was trying very hard to walk a line between taking them out behind the woodshed and not working so hard that they canceled the contract. So, so far, mission accomplished. One thing that has changed for the future is, I made it pretty clear that when they want to renegotiate the contract, that needs to come to my office, not Jerome's office, because we're going to look at the contract, and we're going to hold them to it. And there absolutely will not ever again be retroactive charging, perfect. So, I think they understand where we're at.
Thank all three of you for standing up for the county and taking care of this.
Pretty huge numbers. Especially if you figured those clear into the future, they were going to be big.
So all parties are happy? What do we need to?
Happy as we can be.
Simply need to authorize, I think, one signature line, you to sign, it's an amendment to the contract.
Okay, because as I say, the last one I see is mine signed, but I don't see anywhere for signature. Is there an addendum in here for your signature? I don't see it.
Uh, where's that?
That's what I was trying to leap through, I probably missed it.
It's a single, I think it's only a single page.
It is. To make sure both of those, the ones that he left us that day, I looked at it, and it wasn't acceptable, because it didn't say that it was retroactive, it didn't say it was, didn't say it wasn't, but it did say it was in effect February one of this year, would make you believe it was retroactive.
Yeah.
So make sure the one you get ahold of says September one.
The last one I see was, I signed in nineteen. Maybe that's where it says it carries over, unless something else was heard, but.
Was it emailed, was it?
It was emailed to, was an email to me, but I had a copy of it. I think it was emailed to Penny, you didn't get a copy?
I don't think I got a copy.
I just assumed, I'm sorry.
Tyler, you'd be doing signing it for us, wouldn't you?
Oh, boy, no.
Oh, no?
We can.
I'll go see if I got it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a one-page charting of the specific costs and starting September one.
Yeah, you'd see a charting over the page, it's pretty obvious, that's not it, yeah.
Does this outfit provide the food service for quite a few jails around here?
They're pretty big nationwide. They're all the way from Georgia to Oregon. But that was all put together by CVM. They had some tremendous management.
Gives them some pretty good size buying power.
Oh, yeah.
Most of the jails around here come from Lincoln County.
They built a new one in Adams County.
Yeah. That's a little pricey.
That was the last sheriff to live in the jail.
Was it in Nebraska? Really?
Yep.
Is that on the third floor?
Yes, it was, yeah.
His wife probably did all the cooking for the inmates, too, huh?
Well, they might have been set up that way, I don't know. We were back in the day.
Yeah.
Hastings, that's a lot of.
Oh, that is a lot.
A lot of people probably in that jail. They might be gone with these people, but they might be contracted with this group.
Who's that?
Adams County.
Oh, they might be, I don't know, I don't know who all is in the state, there's quite a few. I think there's quite a few of.
Must be quite a population, or I wouldn't be spending forty million bucks to build a new one.
Yeah.
Forty?
Well, I thought the number was.
Started out at thirty-four, last I heard, it was thirty-eight.
Oh, wow.
For Adams?
For Adams. They're doing preformed concrete walls, and he told me Thursday that they've got those all up, I wanted to put the hook on. So they're coming along pretty fast, but those concrete prefab walls.
Mr. Chairman, is that an addendum to the contract, is that what you?
This is, and it is the amendment that is effective as of September one, 2022.
That's it. That's the one we want?
Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we authorize you to sign the amendment to the Summit Food contract effective September one, 2022.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems, any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wooler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brentz?
You still got money for donuts, Raleigh.
All we need those.
Power rings, I mean, sorry.
Cop food. Cop food.
Misstated. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Strong enough, but not too strong, huh?
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. Discuss and consider the memorandum of understanding with the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation for lease of Greenbrier property. And I believe we have a few gentlemen with us today, I'd invite them to come up. And speak to this. Sure.
He said gentlemen, so you fit that.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning. Well, we can't thank the county enough for all the wonderful cooperation, great partnership. This thing is such a home run, and we're successful in getting the grant, this is the next big step. The Greenbrier facility is definitely a key component of making that whole system work out there. And certainly with the county's pursuit of the Illinois Port Authority, just makes it ideal situation. Arrived at what we felt was a very fair cost, and kind of turned it over to Tyler and Bill Trzynski, who works on our behalf, and worked out the language of the agreement, trying to make it as you know, as clear, but simplistic as possible, and arranged for a long-term relationship with the county. We obviously have had numerous conversations with the state of Nebraska to make sure that we understood what the ground rules were with them, that, on how the money flows. And the statute, the law that was adopted clearly says that the development corporation has to be the developer of the rail park. And so, money has to facilitate through us. We have a very clear understanding, you know, that the county's making this happen through the purchase, and we'll turn right around, and this memorandum should clarify how things are moving forward with a potential lease up to ninety-nine years at some point. That if, you know, we get the green light, the state approval, we come back to county ownership. So Tyler and Bill worked long and hard on that, and went back and forth to make sure we got the language where we felt, you know, it was clear for everybody. And Tyler, you sure weigh in anytime, if you'd like.
I'm pretty sure I've got it, Bill and I haven't written it clear enough that I don't need to weigh in on it. I hope, unless somebody's got a question.
Just have a comment, I've been discussing this, Gary, moving forward, my concern was that the ARP funds were well utilized for the maximized effect for the economy here. I think this does that. My extreme caution was the fact that I was concerned if we purchased and bequeathed, so to speak, and we couldn't retrieve it. But Tyler has assured us now with this document that we can, in fact, retrieve it. So it's a win-win, because you can maximize the matching funds and the five, is it five?
Yeah, the first portion of the grant, I think up to the first
Two.
Two, two million dollars of expenditures is a two-to-one ratio. And then it's five-to-one thereafter, so.
So this purchase value goes to that, which helps your cause, so everybody understands that. And heaven help us, we get this all put together, it's going to be tremendous economic engine. And in the event it goes to grab, we have the ability of retrieve this property and see the disposal as we see fit, so.
Absolutely.
I think we're protecting the county's interest, and also doing our very best to make sure DEPCO can get this thing off the ground.
Yeah, it's such a critical component, I can't thank you enough that, you know, getting the grant, getting this agreement in place, really springs board, springboards everything to life. The third key thing is we get an anchor tenant. And we've done a feasibility study on that. We'll probably be releasing information as early as next week, possibly two weeks from now. Kind of spelling out what the feasibility study said, so we can actively solicit companies that are interested in building that facility. It is agriculture-related, which we think is a wonderful fit for Lincoln County's economy, and helping our agriculture neighbors, you know, have a local mark, direct market, potentially. And a couple other projects we're working with out there also are ag-related, so it's just, it's going to be a major emphasis for us moving forward. And Village of Hershey, we've had numerous meetings with them, they're really on board with everything. Also, kind of discussed the timeline on how everything needs to proceed forward, and obviously, the key is the anchor project. But with the money you alluded to, Kent, that there will be the match funds, the state has a system where we know once a year on June 30th, how many local dollars were invested, and then they'll bank how many state incentive dollars we get in the process. Then as we send in requests to have that withdrawn, we have up to one year in which to spend the funds, we don't want to draw everything down immediately. We'll just do it systematically, as we know our expenses are going to move forward, and we can do that periodically throughout the course of a year. So it, I think we understand all the ground rules. We've had one change on the state level, a person that was, we were working with on this, as went to work for the city of Omaha. So a different person is in her place. But then the other grant administrator is still there, so we got everybody on board, and I've tried to keep Chris and Tyler informed as we went along. And I just, I just keep pinching myself, thinking, you know, it's just, so much of this is circumstantial, too, you know, that it all played, fell together, and had not, we had three years of really good planning going into this, saying we wouldn't have been prepared to do it, but we are. Greenbrier's been very good to work with, and they, we've kept them informed, they know where everything stands. Should you approve this today, what we'll do is, after that money transfers to the chamber, we will then put it, work out the sales purchase agreement with them through local title company, and keep it in escrow until, you know, everything is worked out there. And they have tentatively set, like September 15th, to try to work out all the details, and, but they've been nothing but very understanding and very patient to work with.
Gary, you'd mentioned the funds that you would pull out of that grant, those funds would be used for what?
Has to be used for three, primarily three different purchases, or three different categories. One is infrastructure improvement. A second one is your anchor project, you can use a few of those incentive dollars to entice a major investment partner to come in and build. Primarily goes also toward, basically covers their land and site preparation, that kind of thing. And the third thing would be land purchase itself. So we have all our agreements in place, and as we purchase the land, get the anchor project, we obviously have to purchase the land, get the properties annexed, go through all the different processes with the Village of Hershey, all the utility companies, on the improvements that's going to be needed and made, they're all well aware of what's potentially coming down the pipe, a lot of work with Department of Roads, making sure we get turn lanes on Highway 30 in applicable distance. And we just have to have it fall like dominos, you know, one thing. one thing ahead of the other. But I think this really makes it all happen.
Do you, do you know what those, what the amount of those incentive funds would be?
The, for the anchor project? Or for, overall, we can qualify for up to $30 million in state incentive funds. We have to expend $7.5 million locally to capture 100% of those. It's initially a two-year contract, but as long as they see progress, we have up to 10 years in which to fully develop the rail park. Our estimate...
Sixty million?
Yeah, 60 million. That's an estimate from a year and a half ago. Of course, we were in the middle of COVID and uncertainties and those kind of things, but it doesn't, prices rarely come down. But though we are seeing a little alleviation in some of the steel prices and construction materials and those kind of things. But, you know, to do it right and to get the full bang for the buck, it'll take all the 60 million for us to get everything in place. The streets, the sewer water upgrades, the stormwater issues, the site preparation, the rail, spurs coming off the main line, turning lanes off of Highway 30. It adds up quick. And then a substation with the power company and transformers.
I think that this memorandum of understanding is a good testament to the partnership that we have with the development corporation, the Chamber and Development Corporation. We talk, as Commissioner Weems pointed out, maximizing these ARPA dollars that we received. This does go a long way toward that $7.5 million in local match. It takes us well over the halfway point in being able to capture the full 30 million in state match funding and going to something that I know is of everybody's interest here on this board is utilizing these ARPA funds in a matter that is meaningful for our larger community here in Lincoln County, a one-time transitional spend that will have lasting impacts. And in this situation, it's growing our tax base and growing our economy here in Lincoln County. So I'm just pleased of the work that the chamber's doing, the board of directors that I have the privilege of serving with there, and the work that both Tyler and Bill have done on this memorandum of understanding. It's invaluable, so... I suppose with that, is there any other questions or comments of the gentlemen with us today?
I know the community of Hershey has really enjoyed working with you, Gary, and they appreciate all of your effort and energy and they're really looking forward to having the rail park be a partner with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Chairman, I would make a motion to... I'm sorry, I'm getting my line here. To adopt the memorandum of understanding with the North Platte Chamber and Development Corporation for lease... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong line. Oh, is that it?
That's it.
For lease of Greenbrier property and authorize you to sign.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wuler. Any further discussion? I would invite you around this side, Gary, so we can sign. Hearing...
Okay.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugh Lee.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
Gary?
Thank you.
Got one more item left on this topic. Moving on, discuss and consider a donation of funds to the North Platte Chamber for the purchase of the Greenbrier property. This is a total amount of $1 million, less the quarter of a million that we already authorized for the agreement to extend the purchase date, so...
I don't think that's what it says, is it? I mean, on here, if you look at the memorandum of understanding, it says we'll pledge an additional 4.5 million. That was going to be my question, that, well, enough people have looked at it.
Oh, you know what that is? It's the additional equipment and everything else. So yes, it is 4.5 in addition.
In addition to the 250?
Yes, because there was equipment that was associated with the property as far as loading ramps, furniture, everything that would be needed for potential inland port authority to be able to operate. So the amount is 4.5. Correct.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
Chairman, with the memorandum of understanding in mind and the definitions of our options therein, I would move to donate 4.5 million of the ARPA funds available to Lincoln County to the North Platte Chamber, purchase of the Greenbrier facility in Hershey, and authorize you to sign.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Wuler. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugh Lee.
Brunz.
Aye.
We will get that processed very quickly, so...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
It is 10:30. We will move on to our 10:30 agenda item, which is discuss and consider the approval of the 2022 inventory forms submitted by all county offices.
Be glad that we have somebody else doing this for us now.
Cheryl, in my office, works on the inventory. As people purchase things every year, she has a file she keeps. And then on the claims, now she tries to have me put an inventory number on there. She also keeps track of what was just maybe got rid of during the year or swapped between departments. So she has reviewed all these and to the best of her ability, these are correct inventories as of June 30.
Joe, give me your opinion on that.
It's a lot.
I've reviewed in depth a big chunk of that for our county board as well.
That sounds like fiction.
You set the bar pretty high.
No, I know a lot of work has gone into this and so... Who's to share?
Maybe you give a copy to Joe over the weekend so I give him something to do.
Little bit of light reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we review the inventory, the 2022 inventory forms from the county offices and as we find appropriate, sign those inventory forms.
Motion by Hugh Lee, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hugh Lee.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
I think that the chair that you reviewed, I don't think that was the right chair, that third chair.
Show.
Did you check on that?
I did.
Because I thought that was an 1136.
Sonality of something.
You didn't hear that remark, did you?
I did. I don't either.
We have it on tape.
That's great hearing.
It was interesting and at times we did find extensive reviews, but some departments got there somewhere before we had it.
Yep. It's always good to take a look at stuff periodically. Is this, this is donated, yeah?
Yes.
I have no forms to sign against with this Kerry signing. So if she signs, Terry signing, you know it's correct.
We're genuinely glad to see that there's a good system set up 1015 years ago that really helps keep an eye on it. Everything being tied to truce. Just to be clear, when they would give it to another office, they wouldn't say anything to anybody. So when their office did show they had it, you know... Now they have to sign a transfer form.
I'm sure for insurance purposes and just the overall welfare of the county, this probably plays a part in that, right?
Yeah, and, I mean, they're the heart of assets of the county. People come and go, this is how you make sure that...
Our equipment stays.
Essentially, it's one of your goals. I would imagine the Roads Department had some scrutiny there.
Oh, yes, you did.
I'm going on vacation. Oh, by the way.
You're going on vacation.
Sorry, Thursday, I'll be on vacation until, so I'm...
That was my...
Cisco will be here the Tuesday after that.
Oh, perfect. It's a awful decent...
Not quite that much.
Any big plans?
Well, I've taken a week off, so I'm going to rebuild the front end of my truck and clean my garage. Now, instead of doing that, I'm hauling my mom to Lincoln a few times for a heart doctor appointment.
Oh, who?
Heart ablation. And then I gotta go back to Lincoln on the sixth because my wife has a job at the United Center.
Oh, we heard about that.
A small promotion.
Interviews in Lincoln, but the job's here, right? You're not going anywhere.
Hopefully not. Unless there's something, unless there's something the governor didn't know about.
Your bigger concern is if she gets the job.
See, guys.
I might not need this one.
Oh.
Just mean, I hope to say something like that.
Yes, I'm sorry. You know, I guess I'm so used to taking...
No, I'm pretty much back here for another six and a half years.
Before the Panama move?
Oh, that's my five for my $11.61, so for my $6.61.
You're going to want some comment here shortly. Here's the one we should...
Tell Melanie you want to start going hourly.
What's that?
Tell Melanie you want to start going hourly. I saw you on the news last night, did a good job.
Thank you. There was a couple hiccups, but we're good.
It'll take us a while to break you in, but Marissa always brought us donuts.
Coffee.
Coffee.
Next week.
Just so you know.
I have a card that Marissa has left for this board.
Oh, cool. That's a pretty skinny form.
Talking about the paper or the...
The attorney's office. Some of them have been real fat piles.
Oh, you have legal...
These ones are real skinny.
Okay, legal easy, so there's, you can't question anything right there.
And then if you use microscopic print, it gets even tinier.
Do we have a...
I think they're waiting for forms back from the state.
Should hopefully be on our agenda next meeting.
Situation change?
Yep.
Brandon, what's your name?
As of this morning. Like literally five minutes before the meeting started. That's got to be all...
I was going to say, that is a big, I bet they have a lot.
Computers and servers, tables, TVs.
Becky, you'd mentioned that Judge Pickering had a budgeted item for the renovations he's proposing up there.
It was in the building fund.
What was the amount of that?
I think he put $40,000 in there, but now it's considerably less than that.
Well, I think that also has changed. So we'll be, I think we're taking it in a different direction.
Well, maybe the judge said you could change the permit.
Yep.
Give him an inch.
I think, I think it's a well-thought-out, good plan. I think it'll be a much better use of the... So it'll, it'll extend the project.
A little bit, but not that much.
Weeks, anyway.
Right. Reviewing these, I'm going to...
I was being anxious to be on air.
I didn't hear it, so I did what I wanted to do, just respond.
When do we plan on hearing back from the veteran services committee?
Uh, I think that's the one they were talking about.
Yeah, I think it sounds like there may be something they need to do next week.
We are waiting for a form to come back from the state office via verifying residency.
Who will verify?
Huh?
Who will verify?
Thomas Gann.
Mr. Gann certainly possesses the passion for the position.
I have a question. Does the county have a mission statement?
Essentially, I'm not aware, I guess.
I was just reviewing our new updated website this weekend and a lot of, a lot of our departments have a mission statement on their first page. And I just didn't know if the county had one that we use or.
Would you rule it? A mission would be to provide the very best service possible at the very lowest cost possible to the taxpayer. How's that permission statement?
That sounds like a great mission.
I know our website is now more mobile friendly, but I would very disappoint Ben it did not change the, there was not really changes to the character of the website.
Pretty much. I wonder if we have, if we can have some input with that.
Sammy did ask for instance, but it just needs to be refreshed.
A little more user friendly and eye catching.
It's more user friendly, but to your point, it's kind of the same tired look. I don't know. I don't know anything about the building.
Tammy, we were talking about our new website.
Yeah.
And you worked pretty closely with those people, right?
Yeah.
Are there, I know you sent out an email asking for suggestions. Are they still open to suggestions or?
Oh, yeah.
Are they? Is there something we can?
I was hoping that the, I don't know what you're about developing, beginning with. Some of the pages should go on, your menu, you drop down, you go up to the top and then your subchapter should drop down. Does that, does that suggest that's how that is or you have to go to the? Can't even remember, to be honest with you.
Wow.
I'll look it up.
Probably not.
Not that one. Probably not that one.
My question, I mean, you know, it just seems. Okay, Jeff Higgins is going to be working on fresh bids then for the work.
Yes, yeah.
Can they, can they themselves take the book shows out?
Yes, and I think they are already working on some of that.
Huh?
So initially, he had gotten separate bids from separate entities for the electric and the drywall. But he's thinking since it's been over the 10,000 now, that maybe one bid.
Kent, what are you talking about?
Who subcontracted the other entities would be a better, more efficient way to do it. Is that exactly what you told me? Yeah, because he said he had a conversation with you. And I think that that helps him be able to direct his people better if he's not having to work on each subcontractor posting.
Because they're gonna start doing some of that in.
Overlook this or?
Yes.
Wait till he gets that little bit.
I, well, wait until they get the bill made for back in the judge's office area.
It does, yeah. Because that's the, yeah, that's the phone version. But when you bring it up on a screen, the offices is just right there on the left.
People too, but as far as the reception area and outside the courtrooms, they've already painted those.
Mobile version, there you go. That's what I was looking for, the word.
So it's, you know, moving along, just I think he felt like he needed to make a little bit until the bids come in and they'll come back in ahead before us to discuss and get approval. And maybe by that time, the judge will be up there and then perhaps him staying in there, in the red light. I don't, I don't think we want to have to do it again in a.
I don't, I don't think so. That's why I think of this, this re-adjusting, what we're doing is probably a good thing because it does allow. Was that Joe Piddle?
Joe Piddle may have been trying to get that done, whatever he wanted to do like this. Well, it's a possibility.
I think, I think he's.
They're seeing, they're seeing the essence.
I think what's the nominee is to have a nominee commission we saw, who is our potential working maker? I think you might realize they might have me on a stronger page on decorating. Some of the other agents may have.
You think?
That's possible. Just read the teams.
Well, and I think it's better to take a little time and do it well and do it right than do it with a lot of stress, so.
Especially since Joseph.
Yeah. It's, it's another question to me, just when you think you know what's going on, be prepared to change direction. But I don't think this is a bad change. I, I think it's.
Come on, tomorrow night, I want to rush on this.
Uh huh.
I did hear about that.
Before I talk to the rest of the city. Two eyes, two ears, but only one mouth. Probably can't use them, that's important. There's another add.
You have to use it twice as much to make up for the others. This, I guess that's a half full, half empty.
I would make money with one.
Okay, yeah, I think you're all right. Thank you, guys. I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Don't forget the donut.
Okay, moving on to here, we don't have a need for a closed session. Moving on to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, are there representatives? Tammy, did you have anything?
I do not.
Kent, Jeff did respond that that is abnormal.
Consumption for the book, for the.
For the bill.
Courthouse.
Light and power for the courthouse.
I missed that.
Normal for middle of summer, last month was 5,100 and last year, summer was 4,700.
All right.
Very, very abnormal.
Thank you. You didn't have anything? Okay. Moving on to our next item, which is a budget work session to be held on the 2022-2023 Lincoln County Budget.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I see that North Platte Public School is having their public hearing tonight at the McKinney Education Center. Is, would we attend, somebody attend that or would it be a good idea or?
That's. I mean, it's their purview, it's their budget. I'm surprised that they're doing it before the joint, joint public hearing.
Yeah, because they, they have to, they, I got the notice, they are part of the joint public hearing.
I wonder if that was just one of those things where they scheduled it ahead of time and, but it's.
I was not under that impression they were going to do that, but.
They pulled it over on my calendar, so I haven't confirmed it. I guess I'll call Kinley. I'll call it.
Yeah, I don't, that surprises me.
I just thought it would be good to sit here and I'd everything that I know.
But they're taking like 12%. Is that what I read in the newspaper?
I have to, they just, I just, they have their form, they're gonna do the joint, I don't know. I haven't seen it, I haven't seen the paper this week.
I have a few things pulled over in my calendar that haven't been correct, so maybe that's, maybe it's next month.
We gotta have it done by September 30th, so. We all do, we all have to register by September, but yeah, sure.
The only thing I don't have is what was given to us this last week.
I think Terry gave you sheets last week that updated your Excel spreadsheets with the changes that Susan had made initially. So you should have all inserted those into your Excel budget documents.
Yeah, that's the one piece I don't have in here.
So those changes, Cheryl just redid the sheets and we made those insert and then.
This one here. You don't have this one.
I don't have that.
Tammy, can you make a copy of this for Chris? Or do you want just one of mine?
No, make a copy, please. Thanks, Tammy.
You're welcome. And then after Susan received the official valuation from the assessor's office, she gave you an updated final valuation with a new, new value now.
Saw that, yeah.
That went up, what, about $160 million in valuation, something like that.
It just shows us the correct, the correct final valuation, what the levy is at, where we're starting. Because she had to use the previous year's for the preliminary.
So I suppose one thing I would want to probably knock out sooner rather than later are these budget requests that weren't in the preliminary budget.
Yeah.
For us to determine if that's something we want to include or not.
Correct. The, there is $30,000 in there for the chamber, which we had previously done prior year, so there is that amount in there.
The chamber is asking for us to increase that. It's been set at $30,000. For how many years, Joe?
Well, they've asked, but this one has to have the increase. Quite a while, started out at $25,000, 20 years ago, I don't remember. Then for about five years, we upped it to $30,000, so it's probably been $30,000 for a year or 20 years, I'm guessing that changed quite a while. In the, in the past, if you look at the number of dollars proportionally spent in the city of North Platte and the city limits for the North Platte, Chamber of Commerce and Development for a place that's part of Lincoln County, those numbers were more than fair because the land share needed to be, not even the way that's Lincoln County. You know, Percy, Southern, those people once in a while, making the natural, very seldom was any kind of expense. So that made that so. Yes, but that is correct. But the, the ask is always.
We would lean towards leaving it where it is personally.
Considering the inflationary type environment. Becky, on the Rhodes unproposed budget, there was $200,000 in there for the paddle scraper that has already been taken out of the arco funds. So that particular line item could be.
Can be changed.
Could be removed.
Well, so to, before we do that, Kent brought up a good subject, but maybe we can get to that here in just a second. I'd like to hash through these, these things real quick first.
Okay, okay.
No, you're fine. Yeah, it's a good point that we need to make sure we get hashed out.
That's this one here?
Yes.
I get, I get your thought of leaving it. And Jerry's point of the inflationary environment, I'm wondering if we. I mean, they're dealing with inflation too.
What's that? Say it again.
The, the chambers portion, oh, being $30,000. They utilize that for salaries. For some of their staff, I believe, isn't it? I don't, I.
I take that back. The board was very adamant that we gave to the development corporation specifically products, projects other than salary and stuff like that.
Okay.
That benefited Lincoln County. Now, this board can do whatever we wanted, but that was always the feeling of the board before for overall residents is that it's gonna be something that benefits the county, that's why Lincoln County. We can do whatever we want, but that was the thinking that passed, we kept away from data operating this. So if there was a project out there and we all, we all said that if there's something that really, you know, a special project goes out to like this thing we work on now, we give it these little colors. Then we could always come back and open up that dialogue and so, along with forgiving, so. Just some history.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Joe. I don't know about the full last that they're asking for, of an addition of 75, actually, he gave a couple options, 75,000. Bringing the 30 to 75 would be X amount per capita and bringing it up to 100 would be another. I think that might be a little steep, but.
A lot of steep.
Yeah, a lot of steep.
Where can the stadium is?
Well, south of town, it's on Leach, right, well, probably what about half mile before Buffalo Gate?
Roughly.
In Hills is not in the city limits.
Right.
So it must go down Walker Road, right outside of town.
Yeah, and then at John's, at 83, doesn't, John's is State Farm.
Yeah, because there is a, there is a sign on State Farm Road that says we do sit.
You go in and out of county versus city as you go around the DC.
Well, it's right here on the map.
North of town, I'm not sure.
Number inset. North of town is the river.
That makes sense. And then I suppose where the, I don't know, what's the school that's out on rodeo road, the old school? I think it ends right about there for them. I don't know, um, what's the school that's out on rodeo road, the old school, I think it ends right about there for them.
Taffed.
Taffed, yeah.
Yeah, you both.
Cuz I know that subdivision right before Taffed is in the city limits.
Fairgrounds are out of town, I think.
Yeah, fairgrounds are county.
And then wouldn't Newberry be east, or just past Newberry, didn't they just annex that?
Yeah, they annexed the airport.
Yeah.
So, the feeling to leave it at thirty thousand?
If you're hurting my spiel, that's where I'd leave it.
Okay.
We were, certainly not to the level, it doesn't need to be dealt with.
Yeah.
But if a reason, a reasonable increase along with inflation would be possibility if we raise it at all, but I'm not sure we should, although they are very key part of development of this community. You know, I think, uh, for example, big spend, the big thing was outside of the city limits, and we came up big. You know, four point seven five million is not real.
Right.
And so that was a specific development thing worth telling about operating on inflation, so. And I think that's, that's sort of where I'm at, and if you have something that, that, you know, there's, there's always a dollar factor somewhere, but there is something that we can help out with specifically with, as you know, the dollars. At least in the past, I'm thinking when we first started, because, again, you know, totally different people, different size board, but they were adamant against about staying with the, the Chamber of Commerce, because that's the private industry with business order itself, can't do it on the.
That's, uh, representable too, and we could always step up with hers. Something else.
Need in the future.
And what is the amount that we have been donating?
Thirty.
Thirty.
And that is in the budget. Like, where is that? I didn't see that in the spreadsheet. Miscellaneous.
Think it'd be cheap, but we've got enough other challenges this year.
And that's in this packet?
But no, just need to be entered.
Enter again. It says please insert.
Sixty-five, or?
So right behind this one, sixty-five?
Economic Development, two dash four three, there is three children there.
What, what page?
Sixty-five, sixty-six. Two dash four three, how many pages is this?
Okay, yep, there it is, I see it.
Forty, she said five, sixty-five.
Yeah, that was just the insert that I just put in there, it's sixty, like sixty-five K one. So I put a couple in, sixty-five. But where did you say that?
Yeah, sixty-six, forty-three hundred.
I couldn't, it was on the, no, it has eight.
Okay.
Sixty-six, six.
Oh, there's. So if you have sixty-six, I want. Oh, okay.
That's, that's why I didn't see it, so. Thank you for that, Becky. So probably just leave it at the thirty thousand then. Given that we. Given that we just gave four point seven five million.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cheryl? Do you have, you already said, right?
Next one in there, uh, that's not included is the Child Advocacy Center, Bridge of Hope. They're asking for seventy-five hundred dollars. We historically done anything for them? Is this a new, brand new request?
They, they have requested. They have never moved the funds.
What are, what are their funding sources?
They have several funding sources.
Uh, Bridge of Hope, uh, well, state and private, uh, foundation.
Foundation, yes.
And didn't we also give them some of our state and local, this will recover?
Yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah, like twenty thousand? Maybe, but no.
We, we, we were very, very.
Generous.
Generous, generous, because we all, when we did the program.
Yeah, I think I do do a lot of great work for the county.
My concern would be is if we start opening it up to a lot of these other nonprofits, that we're going to get multiple requests. Yeah.
Set a precedent.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did give them a nice gift on that.
And I don't wanna be cavalier with taxpayer money.
Yeah. And I think they were very appreciative of the long time. Give that they would give to.
Okay, so I think that handles those two requests. Got appropriate notes there, Becky? Okay. All right, to Jerry's point, Jerry raised up the scraper.
Page seventy-one.
So, do we know if we were to utilize that specifically?
Have a page.
What does that do as far as capital improvements, does that help with our lid at all?
I put it, it's not part of the lid.
So does it make more sense if we utilize those funds toward things that would impact the lid? Is there, what, what in their budget could be utilized to?
Could it help us in the future as far as, you know, what we would have available to spend?
I mean, aren't there much funds? So that, that's the question that I have, and I don't understand this process well enough, unfortunately. But there are two other items in there, equipment wise, that have been thought about. Having up a fund paid for, uh, a loader and a grater. But the more I think about that, we should not take those out, we shouldn't, we still leave those in this budget. You might think that.
No, but let's, let's put it this way, I don't know if this is, uh, possible, but as I understand, lease purchase we can. Does count as a, we can do a lease purchase in a restricted franchise. Not for one second. But if there's something, maybe we can work with the, you know, if that's possible, I don't know. I'm probably saying that wrong, but lease purchases was to our advantage in a lot of situations, that comes to see on it. So maybe it's because it's, maybe it's because it doesn't stop towards it, maybe that's why, maybe that's why I'm, I'm thinking about.
The reason I'm bringing up the, the, is because two hundred and eighteen thousand, a hundred dollars included in that there, in that pile right there, and it's to come out of other things. Maybe we need to change, we need to change that, we probably need to do a postpaid.
Oh, good point, that word you're saying would, uh, would be here, but the funding source would be different other than a tax dollar.
Exactly.
But we're tracking the same page here.
So what are we here?
Oh, and by the way, when, when Jason did his budget, he did for payroll, he did utilize an eight percent.
Yes.
That's in this dollar amount.
That's in that dollar amount? Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're utilizing the ARPA funds to where it makes sense positively impacting the budget and our situation.
We don't wanna negatively impact the budget and.
Right.
Right.
This whole fiasco of restrictive, unrestricted.
Exactly.
Stuff that moves out of the south end of the north end of the horse.
You do not see these purchases, they have all the exceptions, I show most of my information, I have capital improvements, purchase of real property or improvements that are linked to real property, part of, they not part of the property. Well, I'm.
I could deal with Logan County, someone on the machine one day.
Of course, exceptions, yeah.
That's absolutely that is.
That is, absolutely that is.
But the motor and the grater are not in here, did you say, Gary? They are.
It seemed like a couple of years.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Skipping a year on the motor graders, but it wasn't adjusted, a bit of good on the lid, right?
Right. It was last year.
The weapon does not.
So. What he has in here is one grater, a hundred and fifty thousand. And he has a loader.
Hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy-five?
Yes. That have not been researched to look for bids yet. The paddle scraper was gonna be a unique item because they're not very name around. And one came available, and that's why that got put on fast track. But the money to pay for that is in the pile of things over there.
Yeah, we signed it today.
That come out of ARPA funds.
Correct.
And we need to change that. We need to get Susan to weigh in on that.
Did we specify that that was gonna be out of ARPA funds in the motion?
In all the conversations that we've had, I believe it was.
In, in conversations, yes, but.
Was it in the motion?
In the motion.
It was, didn't you, you made the motion, right, Jerry, I think you did say ARPA funds.
That's been two whole weeks ago.
Do you know?
That was part of the motion.
Okay, very good, Joe remembers for sure.
Two old guys are there. Can you believe that?
Pretty proud of you.
Not so sure, just in the conspiracy, pretending you remember.
We should probably look it up. Okay.
I was kidding.
There are one young lady and two old guys agreeing.
So we just let that continue on through the process, as, but bear in mind, Jason's ask will be two hundred thousand dollars left.
Right.
So are we gonna zero out that line item, is that what you wanna do?
Or does it make sense just to transfer?
Is that, is that one we can roll forward?
Put it somewhere. You can move it to another line, I mean, you can zero that one out.
How about take it down to, uh, five days to twelve oh five?
Surfaceing.
It'll give us another mile.
That's all.
How about we leave it in equipment?
We, we can, but by choosing service, it is outside the lid. Which line?
And, and equipment is in the lid or outside?
Equipment is in the.
In the.
I know.
Too much for my lid.
Capital improvements are outside of the lid.
Which would be like major for number of projects.
One two.
You'd be better off, move that to line item that is, and also gets targeted.
So you don't lose it for next year.
You don't lose it for next year. Last one. Power rate.
Anything except the cash flow improvement, or?
So equipment is.
Armory.
Armory?
That's, that's outside the lid.
It's an improvement on the road.
We, 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 uh, sometimes, because little more required projects.
We usually do it as a bulk.
Yes, we usually do it as a big project, yes, there we go.
Can we take, can we take it up and put it in with the, uh, motor graders?
Yeah. I have an idea.
What if we only buy one motor grater instead of two? If we don't use them.
Then that just goes back to the cash balance, I'm believing, it makes sense.
So we can, we just roll it forward, so we leave the money available.
But that would make more sense.
It's in our best interest to leave it in her somewhere, so we don't lose it.
Inside the, that line item.
Leave, leave it in a line item.
If you don't, you're gonna regret.
And then the remainder of ARPA funds that we had thought potentially about using for other equipment to use that on expenditures that are outside of the lid, correct?
Well, I don't know if we have a last month left, we're looking for a couple, two.
Well, they were asking for half a million, four seventy-five total. Two hundred went to the scraper, the other was gonna go toward, uh, potential motor grater and a loader.
Oh, I take that back, I should be, and you're, they were asking for how much?
Four seventy-five.
And we're only gonna do one.
Of ARPA funds.
We're only gonna do two eighteen-five hundred.
That, that we specifically allocated toward the scraper in the motion to come out of ARPA funds. So does it make sense that the remainder of that four seventy-five to utilize for things that are outside of the lid? Instead of directing it specifically to a piece of equipment? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to ask?
It does, I mean, it makes sense.
Because we, we have the authority to use it for general.
I understand your questions.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But we have the ability to leave it right where it is, in that line item.
Yeah.
So why would we move it? We've got a timeline here, let's keep, let's be unfettered, let's leave it.
Okay.
And then if we come up with something else, we can reach out and get it, right?
So it doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to.
Even though it says that.
Fast forward in as long as we leave it in there.
Leave it right where it is.
Okay.
You don't have to spend it.
Appropriate it later, because otherwise, once you move it out, then you're kinda stuck, I think.
Even though the scraper has already been acquired?
No, but I'm talking about the balance in the ARPA.
Oh, I see, I see, I was not following you, okay.
If you're gonna, there's no sense tinkering with it, leave it in that account.
Why don't we just leave it in that line item, and we'll just take the scraper off? We'll just, we'll just make it special roadway, and leave the two hundred thousand. That works.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Not like the money's still there, but it's not, there's a.
Since we're on this particular department, are there any other areas in there that need to be looked at? Like I said, on the payroll, we already calculated the eight percent. Are you gonna do an eight percent colon?
Well, it's my understanding that the other elected offices used eight percent, which is a colon, which I think was eight point one percent, I think you're on. In their budget, so if that's what happened in the other offices. I understand this, at least in their budgets. To me, we probably should be consistent with those under our control. If we feel that, uh, the funds aren't there, and that's, that's one thing, but I think that we put the language in, you know, that we've consideration of. When I first heard that, I, I sort of had, but I said, everyone.
Use, use term, term.
I guess.
That's why I was wanting to make sure that that's what we were going to do. Cause I'm, I'll double check on you, but I'm pretty sure when we sat down and talked, he didn't.
Yes, he did, he said he figured eight percent, because that's what the CPI is indicating.
The budget memo you guys approved directed everybody to put the eight point one percent in, and then it left you authority to do whatever you need to do after that, but everybody was supposed to start with the same.
Yeah.
As far as I know, they did.
Remember, we do it by just, we're consistent, so.
Okay.
Good point.
Yep. Um, did any, so have you guys gone through this in detail? I went through and made, made notes. If you look at page four, I did have a question on page four of our worksheet. The county treasurer's office, they're budgeting thirty-five thousand dollars to replace desks and chairs and motor vehicles. Didn't we just utilize a ton of money to buy new furniture?
Couple of years ago.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not trying to speak for the treasurer's office. I just had some information on that. The, what was purchased is very low. I mean, they're very low and they're very small. Um, and from what Sherry told me, some of the chairs and that are breaking. They're literally breaking, so. I don't know why they're, what their plan is as far as the new, new furniture, but it was not, it's not very ergonomically correct and it's. I, I, I don't, I think so. I mean, I don't know.
I'd like to.
Get time to add.
I'd like to.
You know, the other thing that possibly we just walk down and take a look?
I like that.
I like kicking the wheel.
Yeah, let's do.
We have the ability to do that in work session, right?
Yeah, I know. It's, I'm looking so.
Okay.
Let's go over.
Lead the live stream going.
Yep.
Yeah. Tammy, if you have other things that you need to do.
I'm good.
Actually, give me one of those and wipe this off.
Five, six, you know. It was a free go. Hi, Sherry. Oh, the county board is actually, they're supposed to be able, they might want to go down there. They want to go look in there closer to the furniture and all that. I just told them what I knew. They said they were very low. The chairs were breaking, but they are actually all down there. She might go down that direction if you would please. Yes, fine.
This is super awkward.
There's still lives streaming.
Three's of people watching.
Question, when you were, when you were talking about the, the budget deadlines and special meeting. You cannot, they can't adopt their budget before the jury. The, the budget can be adopted the same day.
Right.
So before we have a meeting?
It has to be adopted after the budget hearing, so you have to go up.
How does the work that we have a meeting and we make sure that meeting, we have another meeting?
I just have to have an agenda for it.
I know, but you're supposed to have the minutes published before the next meeting. Do you understand?
But it says in there you can do it the same day.
Cause that was part of our work. We know the minutes have published before the next meeting.
So if the governing board would like to hold a separate meeting immediately following, including the budget hearing, it's directed at language that was following is included. The public knows from that meeting regarding the time that separate meeting started.
Is that what a NACO?
Well, this is the auditor's office, but
Oh, wow.
That's, I mean, NACO's never, it's not made for full five years then. This joint public hearing kind of threw everything in the
Just like that.
I think the statute says it can be the same day.
Just a hundred percent of that tried it over here.
Just add, yeah, this joint public hearing. You should have got the band on some of that. Which was at the time. I mean, I have it. Sorry, it's cold in there.
I'm freezing.
Oh, it's so cold.
I want to see the chair.
Well, that's a good point. Well, it's very
A lot of trouble. I didn't get it, get it, get sent my good.
How much did these chairs cost?
You'd be doing my bill.
That's what I thought, less than three hundred.
But I didn't
Well, I'm not saying that we had nine hundred.
Yeah.
Where did these chairs come from? Amazon?
The dreaded Amazon price.
Two hundred?
Less, less than three hundred.
These were?
But I think these might be kind of bulky for
Well, I don't know, but my, my point is this
These are the same size as what's in there. They just sit, they have a higher backrest.
Are they?
But hey, that's your office. You own it. You're, you're working at a fifty thousand dollar margin for the whole year. You gotta replace chairs there? You're the CEO, the owner of that business? You're the owner of that business. You're gonna replace this chair? I know my business, I'm not, I sit in the work chair, I'm not, I take one of mine. Nobody's backing there, it's easy. We may want to consider perhaps some, some special purchase chairs for some individuals. And or desks, you know, you know, the old thing, one size fits all doesn't necessarily make you old too, so maybe there's, it's appropriate that something like that happens.
Those desks did look awfully low.
They didn't.
I, I sat at the one. I mean, the uneven work surface, I could get a, I could get used to that.
Are those the same desks that are in the county attorney's office?
Well, they're not sitting on two by fours to raise them, so no. So that's what you guys did. That was, I had one to keep all against. When our furniture was too low, we simply got lumber and put it under it to make it tighter. But we're not public facing, so.
Right.
I'm not gonna say that's a great solution. Um, yeah, I wouldn't say it's a great solution, but it did come to mind when I stand.
Well, it came to my mind too.
Simply put, uh.
They could build a, build a frame.
They look like great quality, to me.
And I think, uh, cause they said one of them was leaking down, so I don't think all of them
Just the one? Just the one?
Just, well, that's what, uh,
Well, that's
They said was one was leaking down and another one had a crack.
I mean, that's gonna change that cylinder out.
I would think so.
That's what my thought is. To me, that doesn't make sense to spend thirty-five thousand, budget thirty-five thousand dollars.
I think they said they purchased them three years ago, so I'm sure any warranty they had is out, but we could look into that.
But looking at them, you're great shape. What, what's, what's still on it?
Well, just the cylinder leaking down on the one and the arm cracking on the, on the other one.
And I, I never saw the cracked arm. I saw one individual that had
Had taken off.
And that's a personal choice, I think, right?
That was a personal choice.
Yeah. So maybe we could compromise. Maybe take a look at either raising the desks up or replacing them and leave the chairs.
Thought somebody down there said they had checked with Jill about doing that and he was concerned about
Stability.
Hello?
I suppose my ask would be for them to
Yes, sir.
Do some more homework on cost of desks through state net bids, through the penitentiary where they build the furniture.
Right.
Find out
I'll find out.
That, that line item of thirty-five thousand is too steep for my liking. Just my own two cents.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I don't wanna hand tie the elected official.
That's, that's the fine line.
Yep.
She said that the thirty thousand was just a starting point, that they were gonna take a closer look at it. So can we, like, leave that in an adjust once they come back to us?
Or we actually, or publish it, we can be changing, even after we have the budget here.
So, but
The elected official and
I agree.
Very clearly announce it, whatever the board's feeling is, so they, so they're clear before we're at, we can proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Is Alex aware?
Probably not, she hasn't been
Exactly.
So that's why I said we should speak to Sherry, not to somebody else.
She'll be back in tomorrow. I think they were gonna bring this up with her, so.
Um, but with Kelly, your point, if you share that website with Sherry sooner than later, maybe she'll have opportunity to then share that with Alex.
I'll do it today.
And say, hey, this is another option, or two other options.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm looking at their expenditures for their treasure, their, their office is going up over a hundred thousand. From four eighteen excuse me, just shy of a hundred thousand. They budgeted twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred, and it's going up to five hundred and seventy-four thousand. That's a pretty significant percentage increase.
Yeah, it's that money they
There's, there's a big chunk of the seventy thousand that's right here.
In clerical salary. She bringing in additional staff, I remember.
It is called Cornhusker State Industries.
Okay.
Is the name, and I'll, I'll share this website with her.
I think Chris's point, you've got a seventy thousand dollar increase just in clerical salary. So that's what was the last year's number?
Right.
What was that number?
The one in scale.
They, they, they budgeted two sixty-two.
Oh, Judge Ekman's going to his
Which one are you on?
Whom is?
The treasurer's still, page four.
If you add eight percent just to this line item.
I know.
You're at two eighty-two, not three twenty.
Exactly. That's why I'm wondering if she's planning on hiring more staff.
Good question. That's way beyond eight percent.
Oh, you, you, what line are you on?
The clerical staff.
Oh, zero three, zero five. Oh, zero three, zero five.
Budget.
The budget number.
If they're supposed to have divisional employees, they should have a.
Here was your budget number. It was your actual. You really wanna be, you can do that, this, this number is only two eighty-two, not three hundred and twenty.
For eight percent.
Okay, so, they are, they're supposed to have a explanation thing, it was like.
Exactly.
So, that's sort of that, we've in the past, otherwise they could get three hundred employees, you never know, so.
Yeah, and then there goes your cost for.
Insurance and everything else, yeah.
So that rate, that's a red flag to me, is, why is that going up?
And you said it with eighty, two eighty?
If you, if you pencil in a eight percent.
It'd be two eighty-two, nine sixty.
If you take that number, and I'm talking the budgeted number, not the actual expenditure, but the budget number they use, Michaela, if you, if you say, take that times point one oh eight, that number's two eighty-two, not three twenty.
No, three twenty, okay.
It could be, I don't know.
I'd like some explanation, though. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Right.
Yeah, I, we did have that, nobody really could need too much for their.
You spent the. Can you take it, are you gonna go talk to Sherry?
Yes.
Can you ask about an explanation on the
Yes.
the increase on, oops, oh three, oh five? The salaries.
Okay.
One change I need.
We need to put in the budget is that, um, that small little interlocal agreement for the village to settle in for the library, I need to add that in.
Yeah.
That we signed, so that one I will add in.
Thank you.
And where does that go?
That will go in the city county fund, which would be page fifty. It was zero, I had zero in there, so we'll have to add that.
Yeah.
I will work on a resolution to, to close out that handicapped accessibility fund and move that to the building fund that Susan and I talked to you a little bit about.
Was it twenty-five hundred for the library?
Twenty-four oh two. We'll do it, we'll be for sure.
Twenty-four oh two?
Yeah. That whole thing's, I mean, with them being their, yeah, I mean, their nonprofit, she had a, I think they budgeted more money than they, Susan thought they would have. So she, she changed some things, something. Um, it was in this, I mean, Susan did a lot of that, I mean, this was a change that Susan already made.
Does.
I mean, she, she's, I think she told me she, she thought she budgeted more money than they would ever even be getting. I mean, like I said, we don't get claims, we don't get anything more, she could send her money every month, and.
That's what they had it budgeted. They're budgeting it again. Doesn't that make sense for them to be?
Two line items now.
Just setting aside that.
Let them get a nonprofit, have a nonprofit. They're paying their own bills.
You could, I mean, it could be a candid conversation, it's just how you maintain the building's purpose, and I'm gonna roll it, as long as we can roll it.
Right.
And add, to their credit, Chris, let's just, well, not Jerry, that's been their, I'm roll it, most of them roll it, and don't, just say, oh, guys, I'm independent.
I know.
You've been very, very good about that.
Yeah.
And I'd hate to see it go back to where you're.
User, user blue statementality.
You're getting them down, and they won't do that anymore. I can tell you, I'm so panicked, thirty years ago, she was the other way.
Yeah.
My phone is ringing off the hook, in July, or June, it said, oh.
Well, I think everybody, I stopped too.
You're moving too much, or leaving too much money.
Yeah, see, those, those changes.
So they gave money back, but they didn't use it all because they knew it wasn't.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious more than anything.
That's what we've got the conversation we just had, could be they were just.
I mean, she's only got, they're the only line item she's got.
Oh, your kid, damn, that much, hold on. Oh, yeah.
Because they don't, we don't pay their bills anymore, they pay their bills. Lodging.
Lodging, yeah.
She just asked for a long time, everything.
Oh, this, this new, and the other four didn't look like this or something?
Well. She's only got one, this number that she has here.
The.
So what that is, I see, okay, that versus what she thought, what, based on, okay.
Right, she, she.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Federal payroll?
Yes.
Uh, she's number twelve, can you educate on the O A S I?
Start with, um, that would be, um.
Those increases.
Yeah, cause I mean, I took the eight point one. And I don't, do I have my? Do I have my? I don't have my. Let me see if I actually got my worksheets here, my, that I got notes on. Uh, ten percent, I have a ten percent actual to last year's budget expenses. The coal was eight point one, and I figured one point nine for other new employees.
Okay.
Seems like that one we always run, is that the one, this one and retirement. Sometimes we run real close on those, and I can't remember what was, which one we had to move some stuff around this last year and add a little bit to that line item. So I just use ten percent.
Okay.
What, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask another question, I should know, what's O A S I?
It's like your Medicare.
Okay.
That stuff that we have to pay in for the employees.
Oh, O A, social security.
Yeah.
I knew I should know it. It's not, used to seeing it like that.
Um, line thirteen, I see a note, deputy salary jumped up pretty significantly, old, the outgoing deputy had a lot of unpaid time. Uh, the clerk of the district court. Where are we at on the handbook, right? Have you done anything with that? Of course. I know.
I had a lot going on. Population went down.
Oh, when it presents, like, two or three cents in population, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, cause I got those from sheets they gave, at least I hope I did.
Can you do a calculation for me on the custodial staff?
I'll do my best.
Hundred forty-five thousand five hundred. At the eight percent. So theirs jumped up to one eighty-four.
Yeah, so. Budgeted, actual, okay, let, let's be fair, let's take this number, cause they overspent the line item.
Okay.
So let's take one eight, one forty-eight.
Four ninety-two.
Four ninety-two. Whoa, 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 whoa. They didn't cancel off, did they?
One four eight, four ninety-two.
Looks like, yeah, but hundred and sixty thousand.
He's just buckling, yeah, it's on the other side.
Yeah, because. Becky, when they pencil in expenses on salary, are we, benefits don't come in now, I, I, they're separate, so that's not a reason.
But they had some increases that were approved prior to June, prior to the end of June.
That's not a lot of money.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
Yeah, just asking.
Just asking.
Okay, on the building fund, I had put fifty thousand dollars in for that generator, which was Susan took outside the lid. So.
Yeah, it did increase something.
Well, but you guys voted to take out of the ARPA funds, we're gonna have to zero that out.
Where are you at?
Um, this is page ninety-four, it's the generator for the courthouse. So that will affect our lid. Or you could put the whole amount in there and take it outside the lid, but if you chose the, once you, if you're gonna do the ARPA funds, that will change that, so.
You suggesting from a budget standpoint, we'd be better off to take it outside, maybe the ARPA fund?
I mean, if you have other uses for the ARPA funds, possibly.
Did you hear that?
Hmm.
She's pointing out that the generator purchase is outside the lid.
Similar to the scraper?
No, scraper is in the lid, cause it's equipment.
Cause that would be a capital expenditure.
This is a capital improvement.
Capital improvement, thank you. So maybe we'd be smarter to leave the ARPA funds for something else.
Cause that, that's already worked into the budget for the generator?
Fifty, fifty, fifty of it was.
And it was a hundred and.
Eighty-five.
Okay.
That's my thing about that.
Eighty-five grand.
Yeah.
You can't ignore the budget because it affects something.
Well, that's the, that's the irony of that entire legislation. And I told Jerome this when he was in office, and so essentially you're telling me that every county board in outstate Nebraska wants to drop in salaries and spend money indiscriminately, and that's not proven historically to be the case. She basics a hamstrut ball, they have to play defense. With your appropriation, your asking authority, that's why everybody does that. Well, I agree, it, it's counterproductive to efficient government, cause they won't let you have the latitude to be responsible, to do your job.
I, I guess that would be my suggestion, let's put that in there and see what the next, the draft looks like.
Let's do that.
Yeah. I agree.
It's getting under eighty-five thousand.
Um, the city county fund, Joe, you were working with Lane Grossup on interlocals.
Oh, the only thing that we came up basically was, uh, four percent increase on everything, it's, uh, fire and, uh, ambulance, which is gonna need to be more than that because that was a five-year contract. And that's the way we left it. Uh, I'm, I'm back with him. I guess we can come up, because I said I have some more time to study that, and be honest with you, I haven't, so, that's what that's.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna round it up to a hundred thirty-six thousand, cause they were, those were estimates on the, that did include the hardware. I'm also not sure where Brandon is on that building, too, for that amount that we had in there, that one that's underneath that for his, his building. I, I haven't talked to Brandon about that anymore.
We had what, a hundred thousand set aside last year?
We had a hundred fifty thousand set aside last year.
And that just rolled over to this year's plan?
Ooh, how many years can you roll it?
They've been more lenient with the, you know, delivery issues and things like that, but
two or three.
Three, three, yeah, three years you're probably okay after that, probably.
Yeah. And Deanne's, and Deanne's retired, so I'm not getting that much want to do this.
Yes, she is, they have hired two people to replace her.
You know, the, the, at one time, you know, there was the conversation that Rhodes was gonna go together with them and buy a new side building, whatever you say. But I think you realize that the board probably.
A reasonable price.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building, too, Rhodes.
Or is that pretty top of the line for noxious weeds versus other sides?
New, uh, florist, single seater right now.
We liked it, cause we could drive our trucks right in there and go to whatever department, like, we've been there, a lot of welding, robs, signing, and that kind of stuff, and.
No, I don't know if they're asking for like cab air. Which.
I understand, I understand that.
Have they breeded?
Beautiful building.
Decades of. I'm just looking. The last two weeks, we, um, Brandon Flores tripped out with cab air.
I don't know, somebody probably needs, needs to ask Brandon where he is on that, I know he's been working on some estimates, but.
Uh, he updated a group company's schedule, because I had questioned they were publicly that they were paying for storage.
Thirty-three thousand.
And if they put tracks on.
That would add.
And he said, I have.
And it's not here, storage.
So they're looking for tripped out cabin air. Forty.
Yeah, cause they have that mobile unit now, and.
Side by side, yeah.
And we need to have all the, you know, all the PPI stuff still.
Yeah, they have a lot of expensive equipment they need to protect.
Well.
But is that amount in his budget here?
No, it's in the building fund, because it's a capital improvement.
If we're gonna look at the one-time cost for a building or something, we're serious about doing it, we, uh, get some of that stories put together, we, we might wanna start thinking about that conversation, why we still have a couple of dollars left of one-time spending funds, and, and get all of our people, you know, the dive team, different places, maybe a location or something, and just, just thought.
I'm gonna try to point you a place on the.
Would Rhodes be able to use that building that Dive Team's in now?
Where are they now? The Dive Team, where are they?
Over behind weeds.
Oh, okay.
The building is on the lot.
At the last, okay.
We always are needing more storage.
Always.
Our records grow, and storage has to grow.
I'm wondering what it would take just to throw up a huge steel building. And then in part of it, you could do, uh, you could frame it out and do some temperature control.
Yeah, that's, for Brandon, he does the temperature control, that's the main thing, right?
Yeah, that's gonna be a pretty price tag on that lot, though, I mean, we already have the land where noxious weeds is.
There's an open unit, brand new, thirty thousand.
Oy.
There's, uh, let's see if I, there's a cab.
Are you talking about the weed department?
Yeah.
So, at our last board meeting, we, they discussed. So at our last board meeting, we, they discussed this.
Is that?
They want diesel track units.
Okay. And the track units are gonna cost them six or seven grand.
And John Deere has given them a quote of twenty thousand apiece.
Oh.
Yep.
For the tracks?
For the, for the, the whole unit. And they're really, and I think that might be after trade-in.
Honestly, it's not gonna hold up.
You don't think so? That's the quote that they have.
I'd be looking at, seriously, I'd be looking at staying with a Ranger, or a Kubota, something that'll, I mean, a Kubota's gonna that, you know, that John Deere will die in about an hour compared to.
We should ask for her to come speak to us about that, he's the one that has lots of good information.
Well, that's fine with me, but.
But as far as diesels go, and track units, because they said those just aren't serving a purpose where they go, you know, into ditches.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing with the tracks, but I don't even know if Kubota, I would think they'd have that option, because they sell them in the north country.
Well, I think it was a matter of when they could.
And they're not cheap. They're definitely not cheap.
Diesel because of the fire rate?
Yes.
I was just curious, if the, the eighty-three thousand seemed a little steep, if they're budgeted.
What picture you on?
Fifty-six.
So, does that include repairing?
It just says two new side-by-side plus warranty and two new tracks.
That does seem steep, because the conversation I listened to was twenty thousand apiece after trade-ins.
Really?
Yeah.
No, I've never been that impressed with their unit, but.
Uh, and their, their board voted to pursue, you know, get bids, because I told them, you're gonna have to get, you know, three competitive bids, and they said, well, what if we can't on the type of unit we need, and I said, we still get a bid on what's available, and then we, you know, I think we've done it with the other equipment where, depending on availability and whether it is what they're looking for, you're gonna lose out.
But they're looking to get pretty used down in the frameways, or is it like?
All over.
Back in the canyons.
Yeah, they're everywhere, that's a lot of, you know, the, the canyon work, uh, the four-wheeler is a good way to break your neck.
Yeah.
Especially if you.
Been there, done that. Well, the track machine has got a lot better stability, and certainly four-wheeler's a lot safer for the operator, plus you've got a
A tank.
You've got a rock sheen around you, and if you strap in like you should, even if you do take a tumble, at least hopefully we get.
Boy, I just look at that highway to center, no matter what you're at, if you get a chemical on there, it just looks like trouble, I mean.
Airplane time.
Well, part of, part of the problem was getting stuck, with the track units.
But the track unit in the swampy stuff in the valley, that makes a lot of sense.
Good sense.
But I'm with Joe, I mean, he can get in lots of trouble nails.
I just don't wanna have somebody that go, oh, look what I got, I can go up this tiny of an implant or something, you know, it's a can.
Yeah.
Oh, so that didn't, that must, because it says two tracks also, so that, the twenty thousand was not included, the tracks.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
The cost of those units today, it didn't matter if it was Canaan, Polaris, or someone that.
No, I thought it was a heck of a deal, we've priced them.
Kubota's probably higher price than Polaris.
Yeah, but the tracks are what, eight thousand a max, piece?
I did not, you know, the individuals will break down.
They will only, they'll only run thirty mile, I don't, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Right.
Thirty mile mark pretty fast, but.
And, and I don't have the dog to fight, I'm just saying, I have a.
How soon will they have a better understanding?
Well, so my advice to them was, maybe we needed to get through the budget process before they came in to us here with a hard proposal, but maybe I should go back and tell them.
I'm not, I'm not wanting to handcuff them, I mean, give them some attitude, I was just, I would just, I'm scrutinizing things, I'm asking questions, that's all.
I think.
I'm sure would, has spent some time with them, but.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe I'm underestimating the durability of here.
Um, Justin had a lot of really good input.
Yours only is good as who they subcontract to, because if you notice, all their compact tractors are built by the Japanese, Myanmar, and they're, they're, yes, they're UTVs, I don't think they've in-house those, I think they're a contract to, and I don't know who made the fractures, could be Canaan, could be Kawasaki.
Well, I know part of the conversation was, it's because they had diesels.
Yeah.
And, and others didn't offer it, and availability, and then they couldn't get them.
Uh, yeah, I know.
Page fifty-eight.
Yeah, you can do better than, I'm not saying they don't, like, they'll do better than a Ranger.
I can.
The comments, this is DHHS.
Yeah, something to just at least think about. We've had two machines, um, a D-Lo on the north side, donated to
Only doing one, I'm talking to Chris, sorry.
To the sheriff's department for the last twenty-five, thirty years, at no cost. Given to them to use.
They haven't had them for a couple of years now.
Well, they haven't, oh, okay. So, so one got stole, because that was still the one they got, and that one that was about two years ago.
I think one got damaged at Nebraska land days, and it went back, and they never got one back, early, a couple of years ago.
Oh.
Those were probably Kawasaki's.
Maxwell's off road.
Yeah, so that's another reason I was saying, if some way to consider, you know, they've just given us no cost, those used for the last twenty-five, thirty years, you know, it was a nice, nice gesture.
It is nice.
And Booker's, like, fully abreast of what's transpired there, so.
It'd be, it'd be, to that, to your point, Joe, it'd be nice to ask them, be included, and tell them what we're thinking, this is what we're thinking, we want. Let them, you know, let them tell you they exclude themselves, they can't look at the product that matches your shit.
It would be nice for someone.
That's true.
Um, page fifty-eight.
You know, maybe that's why it becomes like in Colorado, it's a little bit, maybe that didn't work out over there, it's a little rough.
This is what you got going here.
I'm just curious about the comments that Becky put in here.
On what page?
Page fifty-eight. And this goes back to that conversation that we've been having for about a year now. About thirty percent increase.
The general systems.
Who is, what is counting?
That's DHHS.
They're, they're not doing anything, right?
Yeah, I'm going, sorry.
I know.
But this is, this is indicative of the point, supposedly they have a ton of staff that they need all that square footage for to get these expenses, what they're utilizing.
Sounds like fiction, yeah.
Exactly.
You did update our deadlines, that's probably something we do, we put up a review of, like, every year. We did update them, we put them for, like, new master rent, because they couldn't be the right places that are livable for the non-settlement, our general systems and medical systems guidelines. So we did update some of those, it's probably in three, four years, we only have five now, who knows, but, so I don't know if that's someone that can't find closes to rent or anything to help these people in that dollar amount, or just, I cannot believe there's not any for those people that are falling between the cracks.
Ah, exactly, I would agree with you. And for that, those expenses to be less than what they were a few years ago, makes no sense.
We used to do a lot of surgeries, um, branch systems, um, medical system, medication, you know, things like that, and then, over the years, it was just gotten less and less and less and less.
You know, part of it might be, you know, just enough to get in trouble, but and do Medicare, Medicaid, they were, a lot of those expenses now go away to that. We are in region two unit services, having a hard time spending the money that we have already budgeted, because the state wants everything built on a unit basis, rather than, let it pay this much, it has to be eighty-two dollars a unit, or something, or it might be three quarters of a dollar, whatever it might be. But a lot of those services, we can't build, well, they're, they're being charged to Medicare, Medicaid, because they've expanded the program, and so maybe they're picking up some of those costs, I don't know that. I know that's just a thought, I know that is happening in the regions, too.
Okay.
The book was paying in rent, and what we're getting.
I mean, their rent is almost exactly the same as their entire operating budget.
That is the old, that's, that's the previous rate, too.
Yeah, that's not what they add, that thirty-eight percent increase that they asked for.
Thirty-eight percent increase in rent?
That's, it was, wasn't it, thirty?
It was closer to sixty.
It was, it was a lot.
I don't remember.
It's going from forty to sixty-two.
Was it sixty-two, that's right.
I remember I got that knocked down pretty good at my administration.
Good job. Fourth floor's looking pretty attractive.
It's too small.
I know, it is pretty small, it's not as big.
No, it's plenty of square footage for the actual number of HHS employees that administer the general service.
So what can we do about that? Nothing?
Go back and ask for revisits, contract back and whatever.
I can send another letter asking them to assess their manpower and again point out when the rent that they're charging us for the crap saving exceeds or nearly exceeds their operating budget, and their operating budget is going down, so please justify how you're using twenty-one health and human services utilities to administer county's general service fund based on these numbers. And they're gonna send me the same letter they did last year, and we'll date our, I'll assume, I'll send it, I got no problem being, I got.
Is the county mandated by law to provide these services, or are they being housed?
Yes.
I know, I know Dodge County does their own general systems, I don't know how many other counties do, I just know Dodge does.
I don't know, but if I come back and the answer is no, we don't have to have health and human services do it, I'm pretty sure I know which department that's gonna fall on.
The office is right behind this thing?
Uh, I was thinking the county clerk's office.
Oh.
Oh, geez. Well, I mean, for twenty burials, I mean, I mean, there'd be, might be more.
Or she could give, thank you, half the money they're asking for, or she could hire somebody full-time to do it.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing you have to remember is if you try, if you try going over there for services, or if you try calling, because, you know, when COVID came, they started out.
They, they're all working remotely.
And so when you're working from, remotely, that has a preventive effect on the people you serve, it's my favorite.
So I, I did have three phone calls.
Even this supervisor was working remotely, by the way.
I had three phone calls from a family about a town bury, burial, and it was almost impossible for them to get ahold of anybody at this office to talk to, and when they did, they weren't very professional or nice, which is not what a family needs at that time. I think we should revisit it.
Can we do, yeah, can we do some homework on that and find out if it's something that?
If, if the board would like me to look into any and all options to reduce that budget item, or replace it, go replace it in any fashion, I will certainly do so, please.
Please.
I would like that to happen.
Yeah, no kidding.
I, I think it's just a huge expenditure.
You gotta go on it, okay. Oh, whoa, good going.
Enjoy lunch.
Thanks. I gotta be over, find my life away here a little bit.
Closing on a property. Okay, sorry, I just wanted, I'm keeping everybody, but I hadn't. Um, page sixty-six. Yeah, but it wasn't, I'm looking specifically at three thousand. Two dash three thousand. Line item two dash three thousand, on page sixty-six.
There we go, medical jail.
Over the years, we've had rather large claims at that point, and we have it for the last probably ten, but we have had larger claims, and that is just kind of a placeholder that we've had in there, let's call that, I guess.
To me, this is something that we have the inheritance tax type situation for.
Or now we do, it's only taken away.
In the past, we've tried to hold some monies in the budget. For, for example, and you're right, we could probably do the inheritance tax, I can think of two or three claims that we've used this out of, that sometimes there are things that insurance is like covered because of things or something. Um, and that's not necessarily to say it's, that we need to keep it in there, but I think it was in the past, uh, waiting to protect ourselves.
What about that shooting out of?
The cemetery?
The car back to the.
Yes, yes, and that gentleman incurred tremendous expenses here in Omaha, insurance paid part of it, is this, did we pay the rest of it out of?
I don't know where it came out of, you said.
I think it got out of inheritance, didn't it? I don't remember.
I don't, I don't know where it came out of, sure.
It did come out, it's fine, but it could have, but it didn't. You guys wanted to do it some other way, I can't remember what you did now.
I, I seem to recall it was inheritance.
But that was, that's something I could use for.
Well, we either use this for what it's supposed to be, or we.
Get rid of it.
Sure.
I don't have a problem having it there, but
I guess that, we, it's just, we've used it, like Joe said, three, four times probably, in all these years, for different things, but.
If we don't use it as something that's rolled over.
Right, and your gym. It just goes into our beginning cash balance for the next year, that's all.
And how much gym will we, how much did we roll over from last year?
For our fund?
I'm just thinking, this is three hundred fifty thousand that we could reduce our property tax, not assuming. It's not, and we have the inheritance tax, stuff like this. Those unforeseen.
So. From a legal, okay, not an amendment, it was reasonable.
Our beginning cash balance was three, about three and a half billion.
A part of that was budgeted, you know, our cash balance, so.
Yeah, and I mean, that includes, I'm assuming that includes some of our investments, I don't know exactly how, but that's.
That was rolled over from last year.
That was our beginning, as of June thirtieth, and July one, that was our, that was right in the trade.
How much?
They might, they might be cautious in that being in there, and make sure that when we do have something happens, that we act in that front.
We'll just kind of pull it up from other sources.
But if you look at, like, we do have a miscellaneous of two dash ninety-nine hundred, now budgeted, we've budgeted two hundred and twenty-five, but we've spent almost two hundred and ninety.
Which one's that again?
Which one's that again?
Uh, that's the, page sixty-six, A one.
Is that miscellaneous miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous, that's just our unexpected expenses, things we did plan or different things like that, and we did run that line item over by.
Maybe it's a matter of us being aware and keeping.
Does it makes, does it, does it make sense to?
Increase miscellaneous?
Increase miscellaneous?
We could. Maybe you could see the previous years we didn't use that one.
Right.
But we could increase, yeah, we could increase miscellaneous and like.
Increase miscellaneous by a couple hundred and then reduce, we were able to whittle out a hundred thousand and we still have a buffer?
Yeah, I do know.
Just a thought.
This is miscellaneous just kind of for that.
So move like two fifty? From that down to miscellaneous, increase the.
Does it need to be that much? Wait, these years you were, were one fifty your last.
We, we rely heavily on miscellaneous because we don't, in my opinion, because I'm not really that good at saying it. It's hard when you're not really doing the direction of what to take something out of. I think they do a better job of taking it out without, by having funds taken out and probably we're even aware of it, you know. You know, so we just say take it out of miscellaneous, you know. But we, I'm the worst one of anybody, so we've got miscellaneous, we have miscellaneous, miscellaneous, so we'll take it out of that, but. I, I agree, some funds could come out somewhere, I, I totally agree.
What about two, what about two twenty-five? Add two twenty-five to the miscellaneous.
Double that amount of.
Yeah, double, double the amount of the miscellaneous and then that remaining hundred and twenty-five, we just scratch out. Would that work?
Yep, I think that sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
So, or here's the three fifty.
So it'd be four twenty, four fifty.
Take that out, yeah. Add another two and twenty-five.
Yeah, it'd be four fifty.
For five hundred thousand.
What's that?
All of this thing is five hundred thousand.
For two hundred, what, what'd that make it? Four fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not what it comes.
Be four fifty down in miscellaneous and then the hundred and twenty-five thousand that would be remaining would be scratched. Gives a little bit more latitude, it provides still a buffer for the budget.
Uh, did I make one more comment, ask one more question, I don't know.
Yeah.
We still have. Couple thousand tons of, uh, hard square left to be filled over our contract. Do we continue to let them bring that in at thirty-five fifty a ton? Knowing that if we read. If we read our contract, it'd be much higher than thirty-five fifty. Do we continue to have them bring that in or do we stop with what we have stopped filed right now, which I'm not exactly sure how much is stopped filed? Because. The road construction crew is telling me that. Crushed granite is wreaking bad spots, but it is not the ideal component for building roads.
And you get a lot more tonnage and yardage out of gravel.
And they can get. Dirt. Mixed dirt from Paulson that they're stripping. They strip the top soil off when they do, do that sand, and have to save that for replanning areas. But the next layer before they get to gravel and sand. Is a viability to it. We are, the road department is buying that stuff at buck fifty a ton. And the roads construction crew tells me that it's much better material in constructing roads than the granite.
They need it for base layers.
So, I don't know what their answer is, but right now they're letting. Albrecht is bringing crushed granite in at three fifty a ton. How much do we need to have?
A hell of a ton?
Three fifty. Thirty-five fifty.
That's because they, whoa.
I was saying.
And that, that's an old price, right? It's not, yeah, so.
It's a contract price.
It's much higher right now.
Much higher right now.
Now, I, I do know that there's another trucker that I can't tell you the quantity, but they bring out a Colorado, but it's a dirty crushed granite. That I like better because it's got some bindings in it versus kind of plain. For I think a considerably less cost, and something like that. You know, bring that back, but as Dan Hall coming back goes up, we'll bring this back.
I'd be interested to find out what can things.
I know what he's talking about.
Yeah, we know what can things.
But I also saw tires out there at the authority department that had crushed granite went through the side of it, ruined the tire. On our equipment and we have bought and, we have purchased tires, I'm told. From the general public that have the same problem. On areas that we have repaired. Now, it's a great repair product for these millions of people. But as far as constructing roads, we don't like it. And it's expensive.
Very expensive.
Compared to a dollar fifty a ton that we can get, ooh, the eyes.
I'm not sure I understand what we're saying because are we saying that? I thought that we filled our soft spots and we built with crushed granite. You're not leaving that for your final service. You were coming over that with something, weren't you?
No.
Oh, you're not, you're leaving that for.
Well, on Miller School Road, I know for a fact that the crushed granite is the final layer.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I can, yeah, well, I can't, I, but in my opinion, the, um, what's the name of it? The millings, it's beyond the crushed, it's the fines, what do you call that? They're little shell-like sizes, you know, it's not a three quarter, a plus three quarter miles. But makes it a lot better with, with gravel or something, some dirt and gravel, because that is not a, that, that is tough on tires for a finished product.
Yeah.
Where it stays hard, there's no question about it. That's how come I like this dirty crushed granite, because it's got a binder with it, it's got a lot of dirt with it.
My understanding is that's what we're getting brought in.
That, that's what I thought they said was it.
My understanding, that's what we're getting brought in because it's the lowest grade stuff they've got.
That's right, yes, that's it.
The pile of crushed granite out here at Paulson's ready-mix plant, that's the better stuff.
Gotcha.
They were selling it to, what, for forty-three bucks a ton. Which is about their cost, but they aren't selling anymore because they don't have enough that they can have.
Jerry, I think in our last meeting with Jason, he had an opinion on whether we continue to just not do a new contract, just continue to fill. Or maybe he felt like that was maybe better, I can't remember the conversation, do you?
Well, his thought was is, he, he brought the question up, we're buying stuff for a dollar fifty that we're using. Getting good use out of it, we're paying thirty-five fifty for stuff that we're, do we have enough of that at all?
Yeah, that was his question.
Because he's seen. I think, I think in that pile over there, there was like twenty-some thousand for what Albrecht brought in this last month. Is that expensive, we want to continue doing? They've got some stock piled up on Cattle Door Road, they've got some stock piled out of Area Fifty-One. And they've got a small little area of pile out here.
Contractually.
Soft spots and blowouts are great.
Can, contractually, can we just break the?
Probably not. They're past, they were one day delivered by name, they were. I'll look at it and see what it says for default, but it was one of those where we were getting at the Albrechts, nobody was terribly concerned about it. And we were hot to trot, this was a great price then, and a year ago, we couldn't get enough granite.
Right.
And I understand there's been a regime change in roads since then, but that's the only person who has changed. So, somebody down the pipe changed their opinion, and that's fine. I'll look at the contract and see what it says, but it might not be just as easy to sell an Albrecht stock rated.
I'd like to know how much we have left on the contract.
I, I would turn maybe, where in Houston can we get it, we need to fill it out.
Probably less than two thousand tons left to go from what I saw last time I looked at this. It's at least a thousand ton left.
Want a few tires?
Those tires aren't cheap either on our road equipment, but we've, I've had several phone calls from people that live on Miller School Road, they. Improvement that they're wearing out a lot of tires there too.
You said a thousand?
You can't please everybody.
I don't know what the right answer is, that's why I'm asking, because they've asked me, so.
I know the gravel is cheaper, but I mean, we've, we've had discussions, we're literally nickel and diming to death. Yeah, we get a cheaper product, but the maintenance that we end up having to go back over. On that road multiple more times than what we're having, we're not, we're not saving.
But there's no way, well, we can't think that we're gonna start building up our roads in this county with the miles of.
Right.
Roads with this, the greatest product in the world, we need to keep it on score for soft spots and blowouts and where we have problems, but. We're not giving up.
Right.
Then we're not giving up a buck fifty a ton of dirt, clay, mix.
Right, right.
We're building it, yeah.
If we're building a road this far.
Exactly.
And if you've got a constant. Degree of material in there. When you start blading that off over the years, it's the same all the way down. If you cap that with granite, pretty soon you graded that off and oh, you're out of stuff. And that makes a problem for down the road somewhere. If you've got a foot, let's say if it's a foot of this buck fifty stuff that we're getting from Albrecht. But they've got a ton of it and they're delighted to take it. We've got a more consistent.
I, I see what you're saying.
Across that gradient, we've got consistent material instead of this much, I don't know where you put the granite.
It's, it's not a very thick layer, because I, I can already see over on Miller School Road where, and.
From Solomon South?
Yeah.
That's, that's what they did when we first started doing that.
You can already see the, the base underneath the granite, people just drive so fast, I don't care what you put on there, gravel, granite. Their tires kick it off and it's building up on the edge of the road, certainly has, I have not seen the motor grader over there grading those roads hardly at all. So they have lasted a lot longer.
And are they able to pull that up from, as they rip the ditches and bring it back up onto, onto the road surface?
I do not know the answer to that, I would think, I would think, but I just don't know if. If it's worth the investment in Jason and Brian's opinion. It's a pretty big spend for the granite.
Yeah.
My, I don't know this because I have talked to Albrecht, but those two guys thought that. Albrecht, he's delighted, thought not continue to do this because.
Yes, and they did that at three dollar fuel, another order, five dollar.
Top dollar fuel, yeah.
So you're probably right, probably people are happy to say, let's just call it done.
And that's why when May first or thirtieth, whichever date it was, that the contract was supposed to be fulfilled. We said, well, let's keep letting it rain, because if we rebid it, it's gonna be higher than this.
Here's the thing that I don't understand is, you, you pay ten dollars for that material, okay, that's, that's what people can buy that for in Colorado, they can buy a ton. And so you're coming back anyway, you're coming back empty, I don't know how much more fuel you, you're bringing back, a full load, less than, it's some amount. But it's not a full, you know, maybe a fifty percent or I don't know, but. So, I'm not sure how you justify not coming back with a full load. I mean, nobody likes empty loads coming back. You gotta fill it up with something, right? Like if I don't.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure. What the.
I mean, the answer is you. I don't know, personally, I'm hesitant to do it, but I mean, we might as well find out the information if we can.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a huge expense, but it is a bigger.
But it is a huge.
It's a bigger expense than what an alternative is.
But it's, but it's a huge little softball change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a sea change.
It's. Yeah.
But the one thing we, we have made the direction to our road department is, is. Let's build up these roads that have been, that have got way too wide without any ditches. That's a direction that we've given and, and the one that is very justified to follow. They've got a pretty good plan in place how to do that, and they're doing it very well with a dollar fifty.
If you wanna see. Our road building crew in action, what they have done out on Lone Star Road is incredible, if you ask me. It's like such an improvement, and I went out there one day to visit them and every person that came by, the mail carrier. The residents that lived there, the people going in had thumbs up. There were some concerns about the soft edges whenever you're building a road.
Yeah.
I mean, it is just great what they're doing.
Where at, Homestead?
Uh, from Highway eighty-three west to Homestead, I believe. Or Somerset, Somerset.
Somerset.
Becky.
And then come back, what's the next road to the north of that?
Watts.
Watts, come back on Watts, Watts is awesome.
Becky.
Yes, your luck, K L.
Page eighty-two. The self-funded insurance fund. What's this word again? Refresh my memory.
Which one's that?
Page eighty-two.
This is where we pay our, the cost between the deductible buy down and our actual deductible.
I see, okay.
What line is that, Chris? Oh.
It's, it's page eighty-two, it's self-funded insurance, so it's all interest deductible.
Okay.
Yeah. Just seeing how it's, how it's actually listed, I was confused, so.
What's the reserve of ninety-five?
That, that has been static, that was the amount they suggested that we have in there in case there is a huge. Way we have where people, because not everybody needs a deductible, but we do have a year where everybody needs somebody deductible. That, that's been static, that money just won't back in.
Page eighty-four. County Drug Law Enforcement.
It is.
Curious about this entire.
We've always hoped for a windfall, we've never got it, these next three pages, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six. I mean, it's been quite some time since we've had like a big drug bust or we've got a lot of money, but that's just kind of the amounts we've had in there.
Can't budget, can't schedule budget.
Yeah. Yes, schedule budget, it's.
Okay, that clarifies. Okay, that, that clarifies for me, so.
And, and perhaps we got a couple.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Yeah, we have some big ones, but then we just don't have to open up budget for them to spend anything.
Makes sense, that helps, thank you.
Are you wanting to give that much?
You know, that also changed when, and I don't know where we're at right now, that's maybe you, you, Tyler, but. It used to be we could seize, you know, the drug dealer in Toronto, when we were right there, all of us, like, during the Obama administration, they changed all that, where they reversed that rule. We can no longer do that. I don't know if that's been, I, I think, very good job of administration, it's, it's, it got reinvented, but. There were, there were some really strong things that our drug task force people were able to take advantage of, and these are especially the things that are very good sites.
To answer your question, this is an Ernie Ford song, I think, sixteen tons remaining. Of crushed granite on that contract.
Oh, six, that's our name, I thought I got four words.
I'm sorry, sixteen hundred tons.
Oh.
I was gonna say.
Sixteen tons, sixteen hundred tons.
The original was two thousand.
The song is sixteen thousand.
Eight thousand.
Oh.
Eight thousand, so.
I said we were somewhere between two and one.
Yeah, so sixteen hundred tons.
That's gonna fall, isn't that two to one, right?
Let's see, so, yeah, I think it is. I don't know what damage it's done in school, but I think it does.
And then the last question I had was on page ninety four. The. District Court.
Yeah, that was.
Remodel.
Mike had given me when he came in prior to coming in here, Judge Paul.
Forty thousand.
What?
That's why I was like, what is going on?
No, because initially, we were like within, we were under ten thousand.
I know, that's why.
So, yeah. What page are you on?
Ninety four.
That must have just been a number that they pulled out of the.
Yeah, I just put it in as a possible.
God, I hate it when the numbers don't add up at all.
Okay.
That's capital, so it would affect our wins, but yes, it still affects you much.
Yeah, no, I mean.
So that's gonna be probably under twenty.
I would say, yeah, cause it's just, it's just carpet and, and.
Drywall.
Drywall.
New windows, a skylight.
No.
No, 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 no.
I could be happy to decrease that if you don't need to.
Yes, please.
Okay, what do you wanna decrease it to?
That was the intention, might think about the, like, the twenty. Give us a little latitude.
I, I would do twenty, yeah. I mean, I think he's being conservative and Jeff is doing a lot of the work. So, I would be shocked, I mean, we were talking less than ten.
I know, I just saw that, I was like. Forty thousand, what? That is.
There's, um, so that we all know, the gentleman in the blue knows, there's, you can't, especially in, uh, something.
I would say twenty would be a safe number.
If that includes like brass glittering and all that, okay.
Cause that was like twenty five hundred.
Yeah, it was twenty three, twenty five, somewhere around there.
He might have just been, you know, yes, he could be.
And that, that was an early conversation before he had ever come in here, okay. Okay.
He just came down and asked me to put, put something in there, so we can, like, discuss.
Okay, so you'll make all those adjustments to the Excels? And give us some updates?
Yeah, I'll get.
Is there anything else that you guys had questions on or would like to see?
So did every?
Just so that we know, Kent and I will. Probably have some interest in the talks, yeah, a few sometimes, it's gonna be a system here, but. As we know, we just approved, we're coming here, I don't mind.
Did every department include, um, you said the eight percent?
Well, that was their direction that they were given, that's. What we, what this board agreed and pushed, pushed out.
And so how does that work for, once the budgets approved and the cost of living raise, whatever it is, goes into effect right away? Or is there like a date?
So, it's, I can't remember, September, I think it starts September sixteenth, it'll be, actually, or October, April, before March.
No, no, I got it.
Yes, that was the budget.
I started to assume that raises approved for a budget that starts in July don't take effect until October.
Yeah.
I'd answer that question, well, obviously.
Yeah, I've had that quite.
What answer did you come up with?
But to be fair, they get that, that same rate all the way through, it makes us, at the end of the day, it shakes out.
It's still a year over your rates.
Exactly.
It's shifted between budget and. I have to start explaining what you find folks, because I find almost their eyes glass over. A lot of, a lot excluded from that.
Yeah, that was a question I had, is, is it, that I had, is it retroactive, I'm like, what? Don't know.
For our concerns, then eight point one, possible adjustment for all county employees to begin the budget process. If the policy was approved, it would go back to September sixteenth, October, like, tables like. It's very spelt, uh, very much. Okay, you guys are set by Saturday, or set by Friday.
January, for us.
Okay. Anything else? It is twelve.